Ladies and gentlemen, and to the council, we have brought up an artist who was chosen by the Grammy. We have had so many of our residents who have made, done remarkable things, but we have the opportunity today to be invited to the gala, maybe a little bit of energy, to just really highlight this and really show this council produce great, great. This young lady, as many of you know, is on American Idol. Ms. Watson finished eighth. She has the second youngest contestant to ever reach the live show and the final. And Marion Watson, would you please stand? Malaya, three times she's played the tuba. And she's also a member of the Modavian Theater of Detroit and the Michigan Opera Theater Children's Choir. She auditioned by singing one of her all-time favorites, "And Mine," Ain't No Way by Erica Fraser. By reaching the final, she has been invited to join the American Idol Summer 2014 concert tour. And it gives me great pleasure along with our council president to present to you our resolution. Madam President.
You serve a gift to serve the world, and that's where you find your purpose. You know, God gave you that gift and you use it in two different contexts. And so he's willing to give you this resolution on behalf of the city council. You may say, my wife.
Before you speak, I have the honor to present to a select few people that we cheer so much, that we say that we give you the key to the city. That we can use all of the resources in our city to make your life complete, to do, use all that we have to offer you to continue to be a great person. So I am the mayor, so this is the key to the city.
I've never been given the key before. I don't even have a key, but I'm a college student. For the city council. But no, I'd like to thank everybody, you know, the council and everybody that's on. You know, all everyone that's supported me through my whole journey on American Idol. Yeah, guys are cool. So thank you, and thanks for the key to the city. Thank you. Uh, I, I. But thank you. Oh yeah, you, don't, don't look at your eyes.
I would like for you to go up and say hi to the council. Thank you, good luck.
I would like for you to go up and say hi to the council.
Thank you, good luck. Hey, I would be more than impressed, sure.
Can I get a copy of that material? Can I give it to you, or give you some stuff too?
Please, go on. Are you ready, please? We do have some comments from our colleagues up here, and this is Jamal.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I was telling Malaya this earlier. Well, a lot of us are longtime fans of the show. And during her first audition, I shot out a tweet that said, "Oh, what great Southfield talent we have on this season this year." And little did I know, they, well, of course, they should have known how quickly and strongly you've progressed in the show. And we're so proud of you because you brought this unmatched Southfield energy to the competition. So, probably since I was Malaya's age, you saw for the last several seasons. And there's been no contestant with the amount of energy, charisma, that you've brought to the competition. And you've made Southfield look good. We are so proud of you. We have voted time and time and time again, we announced it at the council meeting. And you have such a bright future ahead of you, and we are really proud that it started here in the city of Southfield.
I would echo everything that Mr. Moss said. I was just amazed watching your energy on that show when you were on top. And it was wonderful. Besides being proud that you're a Southfielder, we're also very proud, for those of you in Magnolia neighborhood, I have to say that. It's right around the corner.
And I'm sure Councilman, for past, he had some comments. He was your biggest cheerleader here on the council panel.
Well, I'm gonna give you my telephone bill. I just want to congratulate you and your mom and dad and everything that's great. God bless you.
Thank you. All right. Our next panelist, one of our, is Mrs. Dana Perry, who will be the president of the Pace Academy. And you have some comments that you'd like to make, or to give to the audience, or to the chair.
Good evening to Council President Jordan, to the mayor, to Court Banks. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I have with me, Mrs. Dana Waller, who is our admissions people accounting coordinator. I wanted to first of all, thank Councilmember Pro Ten President for COTC for sitting on our reauthorization committee. Pace Academy was reauthorized by district commission based upon our educational merits and work with our students for another five years. So we're really proud of that. We're thankful to Pro Ten President for COTC for his work on the reauthorization committee. Thank you. I wanted to stand before you, very quickly, to invite each of you to our 14th anniversary celebration. Pace Academy has been educating students in the metro Detroit area for 14 years. Today, we will receive a packet that will personally invite each of you to our festivities which will be held in June. Coupled with that, we'll be having an educational town hall in which we're actually inviting all members of the Southfield area, as well as the metro Detroit area, to discuss all the current issues that are facing urban schools across this country. Very specifically, educational funding, safety in schools, as well as academic achievement, and really closing that academic achievement gap. So I would like to personally welcome each of you to participate in that town hall and really participate in our 14th anniversary celebration. Mrs. Waller has a few additional pieces that she'd like to mention as well.
We are very proud to be a part of the Southfield community. Southfield has embraced us, and in turn, we are able then to offer to our surrounding community an athletic and playground facility, which we enjoy seeing children in the neighborhood take, partake in that and utilize both facilities. Again, we look forward to continue to work with the Southfield community and offer resources and continue to partner together.
Great, thank you very much. The next panelist, is this Friday going to be making a presentation to the state farm insurance?
Thank you very much. At a meeting about council about two months ago, Councilman Fraser mentioned or brought forward that State Farm Insurance was offering a community development grant. And on behalf of the city of Southfield, I applied for Neighborhood Assist Grant from State Farm Insurance. And they accepted, they cut off the application in mid-March at $5,000. I was notified last week that Southfield made through the screening, and we are in the top 200. We have a 1 in 5 chance of winning $25,000 for public art in Southfield. But the only way we're going to win, there is a voting component between today and May 17. And if you go online to State Farm Neighborhood Assist, it's a Facebook connection. And then go to the prompt, the state, and you go to Michigan, and you'll see a map of Michigan, and you'll see Southfield on there. And you click on that, and then you vote. And each person can vote up to 10 times a day. The winners last year won, the winning entries last year won, combined with about 60,000 votes. Again, each person who votes, they vote every day, would get 200 votes. So this is very doable, but we do need community support for this. We've developed a community art fund, and this would go a long way if we were successful in securing an additional $25,000. So, I would like to urge everyone to, again, to go to State Farm Neighborhood Assist, State Farm Insurance Neighborhood Assist, and there's a Facebook link to that. Hit Michigan, and then hit the Southfield Community Development Project, which is Art for Southfield City. And we have until, again, May 17. So thank you, and I hope you can join us in, as you vote for Malaya, vote for this as well. Oh, and Mr. Fraser reminded me that you can vote 10 times a day, but you really only have to go online once. Because they allow you to vote 10 times in a second. So it took me today, maybe almost 45 seconds to do this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have one last voting competition. One of our own Southfield residents, Lauren Jordan, is going to answer to come to the podium, please. And Lauren Jordan was selected to be a finalist for the Detroit Institute of Art Fashion Competition, the Samurai collection that's going on now at the DIA. One of 10 voters who signed up, selected to pick a garment piece and voting to say now through May 12. And so can you just briefly share with us, this is my daughter, she hates this being, but on this panel, share a little bit about voting.
Yes, hello, my name is Lauren Jordan, I'm a positive resident of the county of Dallas. I am a fashion designer, and I have been selected as one of the top 10 designers in the state of Michigan to compete in the Detroit Fashion Competition. And I'm asking for everyone's vote. You do have to go to Detroit, or you can go to the DIA, you can vote right off the website, or you can go to DetroitGarmentGroup.com, and you can click on my name to vote for my piece, who went and see the Samurai competition for Detroit's new parts. Again, I'm so excited to be a resident of Southfield, and I hope you guys support it.
And you pick on, I don't know, under four, that's a good one. And we hope you'll do that. We're not going to have the talent here, the young talent, Mr. Moss, so we're trying.
Hey, that's good, good.
Okay, thank you. The next panelist on our agenda, we have several appointments to various boards and commissions to be featured in.
Thank you. Our boards and commissions subcommittee, who consists of Mr. Moss, Mr. Lance, and myself, interviewed a number of people, and I can tell you, and I think I have no problem asking both Mr. Lance and Mr. Moss about the qualifications of the people that we interviewed for the different boards and commissions. Some were new appointments, and some were reappointments. And in fact, we had more than enough candidates for the openings that we were going to fill. And it was tough, it was tough for us to pick the ones because we had to leave good candidates off the selection list. But I would like to say at this point in time, for those that were not selected this time, please don't give up. There will be future openings, and your qualifications were excellent. But tonight, I'm going to read some appointments, and if you're in the audience, I hope to ask you to come forward because we need to have you sworn in so that you can show the rest of the city the talents that you shared with us when you were being interviewed. For the building authority, we are appointing Jim Lemire, who lives on Pleasant Trail in Southfield, to a term that expires April 28, 2019. Those that know Mr. Lemire, Mr. Lemire has a bachelor's degree in architecture from the University of Detroit. He is currently a member of the Southfield Historic Commission, a member of the Facilities Committee with the Adult Wellbeing Services, a member of the Michigan Coalition of Human Rights, and a member of the Flint River Watership Council. And if approved this evening, his service will be effective until April 28, 2019. For the Commission on Senior Adults, we're appointing Karen Hollins, who lives on Haywood Boulevard. And Ms. Hollins has a bachelor's degree in business from Haverford University, and an MBA in Technology Management from the University of Phoenix, and works with seniors and families at Detroit Work Outreach and Involved Community Outreach for Women empowerment. She also has a background in mental health counseling, and has directed a study on caregiver's health and personal wellbeing. And if approved this evening, her tenure will serve through April 28, 2017. Another appointment, Mr. Perry Jones, who lives on Woodwill in Southfield. Mr. Jones holds a bachelor's degree in social work from the University of Michigan, School of Social Work, and a master's degree in biology with a minor in psychology. He directed and supervised staff at seven human service agencies, which endured administration problems, proper identification, solutions, and evaluations. Mr. Jones provided case management program development, fund development, and social policy development. Mr. Jones initiated planning, organizing, and implementation strategies for human service issues, and established and maintained liaison relationships with key county and regional offices within southeastern Michigan. And he's approved this evening, his term expires April 28, 2017. We're also appointing Courtney Neal, who lives on North Public Court in Southfield. And Ms. Neal has a depth and indepth knowledge and understanding of long-term care services, challenges, and solutions for seniors, mentally ill, and disabled individuals. And her term will run through April 28, 2017. Another appointment is Ms. Karen Schrock, who lives at Rockingham in Southfield. Ms. Schrock has a master's degree in psychology, a master's degree in criminal justice from both Michigan, both Michigan State University. She is president and CEO at Adult Wellbeing Services, and has held a variety of positions in public health arena, including policy research associate, board member of Greater Detroit Area Health Council, United Way Agenda Results Committee, Catholic Social Services of Wayne County, Governor's Advisory Committee on Elder Abuse and Aging Services of Michigan. And her term will run through April 28, 2017. Another appointment, Janice Snow, who lives on Harbor Way Road in Southfield. Ms. Snow has a bachelor's degree in education from Illinois State University, a master's degree in university of Michigan, and further studies from Wayne State University in instructional technology. She believes that seniors need programs and events that enrich their lives, making them feel like an important part of their community. And her term will run through April 28, 2017. Another appointment, Keith White, who lives on Glen Nora in Southfield. Mr. White has a bachelor's degree from Morehouse College, a master's degree in educational leadership from Wayne State University, and a doctoral degree from Wayne State University. He is a long-term educator with skills in team building, program planning and development, program implementation, and management and creation and implementation of value-enhancing lifelong learning programs. Mr. White's specific interest is in senior services and healthcare, and his term will run through April 28, 2017. We have a reappointment, Mr. Harmon Gunter, who lives on Greenwich Bridge in Southfield. Mr. Gunter has served on this commission since 2011, and has a strong interest in the cultural aspects of senior citizens' lives of the city, and wants to be an advocate for both. He has been very dedicated, serving his homeowners association for over 20 years, and is just as dedicated in serving the seniors in his community. And his term will run through February 28, 2017. Another reappointment, Mr. Mitchell Simon, who lives at West Point Park in Southfield. Mr. Simon has a bachelor's degree in business administration and accounting from Detroit Institute of Technology. Mr. Simon is an original member of this commission, and has remained totally dedicated and loyal to his purpose and goals. He continues his desire to serve the seniors, and is highly supported by the members of this commission. And his term will run through April 11, 2017. We have a reappointment to the Fire and Police Retirement System Board, Audrey Harvey, who lives on Waydrop in Southfield. Ms. Harvey holds a Juris Doctor, a master's degree in law, and taxation, and a master's degree in accounting from Wayne State University. Ms. Harvey brings a wealth of experience and expertise to this board, and she is responsible for accounting operations, technical accounting, and reporting investment, and reporting investment accounting, tax operations, and management reporting, cash receipt, and disbursement, and cost allocations, in her position as vice president and controller for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. Ms. Harvey has demonstrated faithful competence and consistency on this board since 1998, and comes with high recommendations to continue serving. Her term will run through October 13, 2015. For the zoning board of appeals, we appoint Jody DeFoe, who lives on Bruber View Drive in Southfield. Ms. DeFoe has a master's degree in environmental resource development from Michigan State University. She is the chief deputy treasurer of Golden County, and a recent finance and compliance director in the Democratic Party. Ms. DeFoe's other activities include being a member of the state of Michigan Board of Nursing, appointed by Governor Grant Holmes, and chairing the disciplinary subcommittee on Board of Nursing. Her term will run through April 28, 2017. We have reappointed Mr. Roy Bell, a spring member in Southfield. Mr. Bell has been very active, serving his community from being a former city council member to serving the funding commission and the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Bell's experience and dedication are true assets to this board, and his term will run through October 30, 2015. We have a reappointment of John Petty, who lives at Alza Vista in Southfield. Mr. Petty holds a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from Lawrence Technological University. Mr. Petty has served on this board since 2006, and is a member in good standing. His many years of service connected to Lawrence Technological University, Wayne State University, other boards and advisory councils has greatly benefited this board, and his term will run through February 13, 2015. We reappointed Myra Celestine on Shevington in Southfield. Ms. Celestine has a bachelor's degree in education from Wayne State University, a master's degree in university of Michigan, and further studies from Wayne State University in instructional technology. She believes that seniors need programs and events that enrich their lives, making them feel like an important part of their community. And her term will run through April 28, 2017. Another appointment, Keith White, who lives on Glen Nora in Southfield. Mr. White has a bachelor's degree from Morehouse College, a master's degree in educational leadership from Wayne State University, and a doctoral degree from Wayne State University. He is a long-term educator with skills in team building, program planning and development, program implementation, and management and creation and implementation of value-enhancing lifelong learning programs. Mr. White's specific interest is in senior services and healthcare, and his term will run through April 28, 2017. We have a reappointment, Mr. Harmon Gunter, who lives on Greenwich Bridge in Southfield. Mr. Gunter has served on this commission since 2011, and has a strong interest in the cultural aspects of senior citizens' lives of the city, and wants to be an advocate for both. He has been very dedicated, serving his homeowners association for over 20 years, and is just as dedicated in serving the seniors in his community. And his term will run through February 28, 2017. Another reappointment, Mr. Mitchell Simon, who lives at West Point Park in Southfield. Mr. Simon has a bachelor's degree in business administration and accounting from Detroit Institute of Technology. Mr. Simon is an original member of this commission, and has remained totally dedicated and loyal to his purpose and goals. He continues his desire to serve the seniors, and is highly supported by the members of this commission. And his term will run through April 11, 2017. We have a reappointment to the Fire and Police Retirement System Board, Audrey Harvey, who lives on Waydrop in Southfield. Ms. Harvey holds a Juris Doctor, a master's degree in law, and taxation, and a master's degree in accounting from Wayne State University. Ms. Harvey brings a wealth of experience and expertise to this board, and she is responsible for accounting operations, technical accounting, and reporting investment, and reporting investment accounting, tax operations, and management reporting, cash receipt, and disbursement, and cost allocations, in her position as vice president and controller for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. Ms. Harvey has demonstrated faithful competence and consistency on this board since 1998, and comes with high recommendations to continue serving. Her term will run through October 13, 2015. For the zoning board of appeals, we appoint Jody DeFoe, who lives on Bruber View Drive in Southfield. Ms. DeFoe has a master's degree in environmental resource development from Michigan State University. She is the chief deputy treasurer of Golden County, and a recent finance and compliance director in the Democratic Party. Ms. DeFoe's other activities include being a member of the state of Michigan Board of Nursing, appointed by Governor Grant Holmes, and chairing the disciplinary subcommittee on Board of Nursing. Her term will run through April 28, 2017. We have reappointed Mr. Roy Bell, a spring member in Southfield. Mr. Bell has been very active, serving his community from being a former city council member to serving the funding commission and the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Bell's experience and dedication are true assets to this board, and his term will run through October 30, 2015. We have a reappointment of John Petty, who lives at Alza Vista in Southfield. Mr. Petty holds a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from Lawrence Technological University. Mr. Petty has served on this board since 2006, and is a member in good standing. His many years of service connected to Lawrence Technological University, Wayne State University, other boards and advisory councils has greatly benefited this board, and his term will run through February 13, 2015. We reappointed Myra Celestine on Shevington in Southfield. Ms. Celestine has a bachelor's degree in education from Wayne State University. Ms. Celestine is a member in good standing, and has diligently worked on the zoning board of appeals since 1995 to help chart Southfield's course. Her various jobs and positions have given her experience with building programs, developing bylaws and energy guidelines. And her term will run through June 30, 2015.
Oh, entertaining motion.
We have one more, or two more. We have a reappointment of Darlene Turell, who lives on Civic Center Drive. Ms. Turell receives her bachelor's degree from Wayne State University, and her master's degree in administration from Central Michigan University. She also is a certified associate, association executive through the American Society of Association Executives. Ms. Turell has faithfully served on this board and is an alternate since 1999. Ms. Turell is the executive vice president for the Engineering Society of Detroit, and has over 35 years of experience in association management. Her various expertise includes strategic planning, new venture development, marketing analysis, and implementation. In the implementation of association programs such as membership, recruitment, retention. In the implementation of association programs such as membership, recruitment, retention programs, and education on strategic marketing programs. And her term will run through April 12, 2017. And our final reappointment is Mr. Laswagum, who lives at Plattsburgh in Southfield. Mr. Wagum attended medical colleagues and then completed his master's degree in biology from the University of Minnesota. He received his master's degree in wildlife management from Michigan State University. Mr. Wagum has contributed greatly to the zoning board of appeals, utilizing his experience of many years with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Along with his experience with finding and analyzing many projects in the Army, he has served his church for over two decades as a board member dealing with the financial area of the church. And his term will run through June 30, 2015. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Board and Commissions.
So, move before. A motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Frasier, to approve the appointment and reappointment of all the individuals just named by the panel. Are there any questions?
Yes. May I just make a comment? I know that Jody Defoe was unable to be here because she has a death in the family which has her in North Carolina today, so I would support the motion in moving her to the appointment to the ZDA, but I know she wanted to meet the council and be sworn in, and our follow-up was held by the committee. That's okay with you?
Okay, that's not a problem at all. Would you?
And then, secondly, and maybe just a little want to chime in, but I think I speak on his behalf as well, as well as Mr. Fraser, we did a great four hours, back-to-back-to-back, interviewing such qualified, energetic, talented Southfielders who are just kinda, you know, are ready to serve on their respective commissions and boards, move the community forward, be engaged in what we do here in Southfield, and it was a pleasure. A four-hour meeting seems long, but we were just as energized and exhausted as we are today.
Absolutely. And I read those so that you would know the qualifications of the people that are serving the city of Southfield and interview.
And I really want to thank the community for the hard work that you all put in, and doing whatever it takes to get these fine and diverse people in this town, and you are always to do your best and to go to the end. So, we have a motion by Mr. Fraser before the bylaw, for passing to approve the appointment and reappointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Post-motion here. So, if you can come in a little bit, you'll be supported by our city's church, and then we'll kind of, if you all call out, and we'll see what happens.
We hear a clear, a word, a motion for an attitude toward the United States, that has to do with another state in the South of City, and they will basically inform the duty to the Order for Misses, who you are appointed to or reappointed to, in the purpose of the Southfield, town, the Oklahoma State of Michigan, appointing the best here in the world.
Madam Chair. While the new sworn-in commissioners are standing here, just want to say thank you and to the listening audience, this is what makes our city great, when you have individuals who want to give up their time and to stand up and use expertise that they have to help the city become a better place or improvement. So, I just want to say thank you, and always remember, we need you.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
What do you do with kids in this community?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
What do you do with kids in this community?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
What do you do with kids in this community?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
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 I have A, B, and C.
A.
And, uh...
I have one that I want to pull off, but I do want to ask, just to make a comment on F.
Sure, go ahead.
And down at the bottom where it has global impact, and this is the funding for the student engagement position.
Yeah.
The goal is impacted our financial sums of sustainable city government, and quality development, redevelopment. It would seem to me that this one would also fit Southfield's One Community, One City, because what we're trying to do is create a central place. That would seem like that would also fit.
Ms. Dorn, you don't have any comments to add?
Um, Mr. Dorn, I have, um...
Okay, let me give Mr. Dorn a moment. Is that, is that not a problem?
No, I don't.
All right. I think you got it.
I don't want to pull anything, but when you introduce them, I'd like to comment on I and B before we vote.
I, and what's the other one? D. D, um, so do you want to pull D?
No, I, I, if you introduce them, I'd like to comment now before we vote.
All right, any other items to be taken on? All right, so we'll move with the consent agenda, which targets item number D, and that's the authorization for the grant utility easement to Convent to authorize American protect guidance to appropriate utility easement, and then the document on the hands of the city of Southfield. Consent for order C is to speed up proposals for the un interruptible power supply, and to approve the purchase of the un interruptible power supplies related to power and professional services, and accept the lowest proposal from Michael Wise, Central Michigan, Board of Mountain Act Two, seventy-three thousand seven hundred and five. Consent agenda item D is to approve the cost participation agreement for Greenfield Road reconstruction from eight mile to nine mile, and to authorize American protect files which will sign the appropriate cost participation agreement document on the hands of the city for the reconstruction of the southbound lane of Greenfield Road from eight mile to nine mile road, which estimated total cost of two million nine hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Consent agenda item F is for funding for the student engagement position at Lawrence Technological University, approved entering into a contract with Lawrence Technological University, to guide the maximum cost in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, pay as always equal monthly increment for the cost of the student engagement position. Consent agenda item G is authorized purchase, one of the replacement street, we first for the streets and highway, purchase amount is two hundred and forty-two thousand forty-six dollars, and the funds are provided from the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen major school, certain replacement. Consent agenda item H is a request for extension of water services connection and maintenance services, contract for the period of two thousand, for the period of April twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, through June thirty of two thousand fourteen, and that's to approve and extension of the stadium, the existing contract for the period at, at the rate of four years, for the water service connections of the bank and position. Consent agenda item J is to approve to reallocate the streetlights for every new road project from eight to nine mile roads, and the cost for the streetlights allocation is thirty thousand seven hundred and four dollars, approved from local improvement revolving fund. Consent agenda item F is to approve all the agreement to remove the streetlights for every new project from the northwestern strip drive to eleven mile road, and that cost will be fifty-five thousand five hundred and three dollars, which is, which will be provided from the local improvement revolving fund. Consent agenda item L is to authorize to apply to the local bridge program, and that's nine mile road bridge over the Evans Creek, and to authorize admission of an application through M-DOT to reapply to compete for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen funding cycle for the local bridge program, in order to obtain funding to execute the nine mile road bridge over the Evans Creek, with the estimated cost being four million thirty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, with ninety-five percent being funded through our local bridge program, and the city of Southfield's match being two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and that, those funds are provided out of the major student fund balance account. Consent agenda item M is the extension of personal services contract with the golf professional services, and this authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign an exception of the two thousand ten personal services contract with Terry Anthony Ryan, doing business as a TA, for shop, for the period of April first, two thousand fourteen, through October thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. So, I would accept a motion on those items. Ms. Dorn.
I want to ask a question, and I missed it, but I, I...
Let me get, let me get that.
I'm sure that we have...
Mr. Fraser?
I'm sure that we accepted the consent agenda that you presented.
And it's supported.
Off the board, I have a question.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Dorn, to accept the items that are presented on this agenda, Mr. Dorn.
Yes, under S, the funding for the new maintenance position at Lawrence Technological University, um, I'm not sure about this, and I want to make some legal hang, but authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a contract on the evidence. I know they signed the contract, but execute the contract, is that correct? Do you have any terms?
That's correct, term to execute is to sign the man's...
Okay, all right, so that's all I can say.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Uh, Mr. Fraser?
So, we're not voting on I right now, right? So, I'm, I'm D. We've talked a lot about roads, and virtually every meeting, we talk about roads, and this is the contract to redo Greenfield Road between eight and nine, which is separated on South Belt Lane. And I just want to point out that this is a county road, and yet the city of Southfield is putting in sixty-two thousand from our improvement revolving fund, in other words, our tax dollars, and then the Downtown Development Authority is putting in a hundred thousand, so a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars for roads, it's not ours, but in order to get the road, road fixed, this is why we have such a challenge repairing roads, because we are constantly having to match state, the state and federal, or the state and county roads that are in our city. So, I just bring this up, it's another example of how if we want to get something done, but we have to pony up that money that does not go to neighborhood streets.
All right, we're approving this evening after the vote. So, what's on the table is consent agenda items B, C, D, F, H, J, K, L, and M. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That should be it. So, now we're, we're dealing with the items that were called, and the first one is consent agenda A, and then the authorization to grant the utility easement for the community Mr. Dorn.
Ms. Dorn, I have a question, I'm going to be, I know it's been approved, but I...
You don't think they... You don't think they have any other?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Uh, I have a question, I agree, we have them approved, but the question I have, um, a bit is that the, um, I don't get a piece of property that the city owns in section thirty-four, and I want to make sure that, that when they go in and reduce that property for, excuse me, or and they take that right away, I want to make sure that they restore our property, each and every traffic going to use it. I, I would hope that they would have bought that piece of property from the city, certainly it's certainly no purpose to us, uh, the city there, but since it's there and it's nobody marketing, it's some kind of future that, that it is maintained and not just nothing to go over. Um, the other item I have is E and, and, uh, Mr. Zorn, I wanted to know what, uh, what the, um, what Metro Act funds and in E and the last, uh, three lines of, of the agenda, it says that, uh, uh, which would include a one million dollar transfer from the Metro Act funds if there is a deficiency in major street budget. Such amount shall be transferred from the local to the public fund. I don't know what that Metro Act fund is.
If I may refer this to the chairman. Yes, to the chair. The Metro Act is a statute from the state of Michigan and as different providers, telecommunications companies, in the old days, they would come to us and we would negotiate some kinds of ability for them to use the right of way. Now, under the Metro Act, they pay a certain stated fee to the state, which then comes back to the city for, for use of our right of ways. Those funds are then limited, the city can only use those for right of way related purposes. So that, those funds that have been paid in by various carriers is now reaching the amount and we're able to take right of way issues and costs for every road out of the Metro Act money. So we maintain those funds, they come to us from the state under the state law.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other item is I and, uh, I wanted to, uh, I'll get to it in a minute. And that is, uh, the water main in section thirty-one, that's a, that's a mammoth project. Uh, it's almost, uh, replacing was five miles of water mains in, in the John Gracie area. Uh, I don't see who the engineering firm, I know we have two engineering firms involved in this, one way or the other, but who's, who's going to be on the line with the inspection of, of that project?
The, if I may, Madam President, the engineering firm, O.L.H.M., did the, uh, did the final design, facilitated the bid, and they will be handling the construction engineering of this piece.
And the inspection, make sure everybody's property is put back for each of the?
That's correct.
And, and the other thing, Mr. Zorn, is in the areas where they can save this water main, is that to save us some money and not disrupt the property of, of those owners? I didn't see where they can have sleeping or, uh, a water main, we go in, reline the water mains without having to disturb people's yards, canyons, et cetera. That's all, Madam Chair?
All right.
And then that might come. Um, I was contracted, I'll address this first, Mr. Zorn, I was contracted by the resident of this at the northwest corner of Shaiawaske Seminole and they've already begun major excavation along Shaiawaske Road for this project and her concern is that, um, she has several very, very large, very mature Evergreen trees and, um, her concern is, she understands, she doesn't object to the project, she, she knows, trying to explain to her about the water main, she was contracted, all of that. Her concern is that the root system was so disturbed by these two large trees that, um, she now fears, uh, senior citizen on a small pension, that if the trees do not survive the degradation, uh, that she's going to be stuck with, uh, the, uh, their removals if they die. Uh, I, when I have a look, a lot of the woods were cut to these trees, obviously they're very old, um, but I think I just want to put that on the record that she has that concern.
If, if I may, counsel, the work that's happening right now is the work preceding our project as primarily consumers' energy during, uh, rebuilding their gas line and such, but you said the northwest corner of Seminole and Shaiawaske.
Correct.
I will have someone from our forestry group go out, document the existing conditions, and we will, uh, figure out a way to monitor. Council is hitting a very sensitive point that we will do our best to monitor the restoration work and making sure that we don't disturb existing, I wish I could tell you, man, I can guarantee nothing will die, but, uh, that, as Councilman MacAskey pointed out, is the duty of reline, unfortunately, what consumers' energy does doesn't permit a relining process, they're usually carrying a reline. Someone from forestry will be out on that side and we will make a physical inspection. Thank you.
Yes, we're not, just like.
You know, that's fine for this one person, but I'm sure that that's not the only person in that area that's, that may have some concern about, uh, trees or bushes, so, uh, we need to keep on top of that so that, uh, everybody gets a fair shake.
If, if I may, to the council, we do have, we rightly, uh, survey our staff personnel, speak with the city community here, and we will, uh, reinforce that pretty much wherever work is being worked, that there's a final inspection and that there's no name for this type of thing. Uh, the reality is we have limited staff supervising consumers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we do have our right of way people and I'll speak with them, but once we start our project, we'll be making notation as well on the city piece and we will have our consultant engineers out in the field who can supervise on these matters.
I just wondered if it would be possible to maybe have a consultation with some of the management at, at consumers and let them know that they need to tell their craft people to be careful about, uh, you know, chopping through the, through the root system of the trees and, and be as careful as they possibly can still get the job done. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Well, let me, uh, to the items on the agenda. Consent agenda A is the authorization to grant the utility easement to consumers' energy and that's for the conveyance of documents on behalf of the city to the relocation of the pipe grant due to proposed construction of two route abouts on Evergreen Road in section twenty-three of the city. Consent agenda item E is approval of the agreement for the reconstruction of Evergreen Road from ten mile to service drive to eleven mile and that is to give the city authorization to move forward on that. Consent agenda item E is to receive a bid for the water main replacement project and that in section twenty-one. Any motion?
I, I.
Yes, I do. Do we have a motion by Mr. Simon? Supported by Miss Seymour to approve the three other consent agenda items. Any other questions? On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion clear. The next item on our agenda, we'll move forward to the public hearing and the first item on the public hearing is the single lot special assessment role hearing and confirmation. And if there's anyone in the audience that appears specifically for the single lot special assessment role, we do have city departments that are here that would be able to discuss with you these amounts and so with our city staff in place, we have a representative from the police department, we have a representative from the code as well as the building department. And so they're here and they can sit you at the back of our council chambers if you're here on those particular items. Any questions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council.
Can you drop in a microphone if you can hear?
Yes, in, in here, okay. And section one point one three of the city council Southfield Code of Ordinance mandates that the procedure for assessing certain costs incurred by a city through a special assessment process. The costs that so assessed but not paid become a lien on the land and then placed on the tax bill via special lot, uh, single lot special assessment. In accordance with the code, the city assessor shall prepare a special assessment role covering all such charges and the council shall schedule a hearing of confirmation of the assessment role. Such assessments, interest and charges thereof shall, from the day of confirmation of the role, be and remain a lien on the property assessed. Uh, the provisions in the city ordinance allow for the full reimbursement of all expenses incurred by the city for labor, materials and services with regard to any single premises upon or in respect to which the expense was incurred and is subject to a single lot special assessment. The full reimbursement spread is two hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-eight cents. As the city assessor, I hereby certify that the report that, uh, on the attached is the two thousand and fourteen single lot special assessment role and that the assessment made by me for the purpose of collecting unpaid charges incurred pursuant to chapter one, section one point one three of the city code conforms to the provisions and directions contained in the ordinance relating to such assessments. And, uh, as you stated earlier, that this is, uh, work compiled by four different departments. Uh, the, uh, representatives from each of the departments is available, uh, at the rear of the city council chambers and, uh, are here to answer any specific questions relating to the single lot special assessment.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Fraser. This is a public hearing and if anyone in the audience would like to speak, it's very late to single lot special assessment. This is now the time. Seeing, um, when they say a public hearing, close.
Uh, Chair.
Uh, Mr. Zorn.
I'm, I'm over the single lot of the special assessment role here in the council and, uh, then by the city assessor.
It's over.
We have a motion by Mr. Harper, supported by Mr. Fraser to approve our single lot special assessment hearing. Any questions? We're all right. Any questions on the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion clear. All right, we'll move to the second item on our agenda.
Um, Council President, um, Zorn, there, there were a few people that did come up to the podium, um, prior to start, came up here, prior to the meeting and said they didn't understand this portion and I did indicate to them that prior to the public hearing, you made your announcement, they could come up and go to the back of the room and I see some of them in the back still looking, but I'm not sure if they were real clear that they have an opportunity to meet with either Mr. MacAskey. I, I see the one gentleman, I don't know if they wanted to see enough, there were three gentlemen that approached me.
Okay.
Those, those are the two that were.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll move to the second item on our, our public hearing and that is the economic development initiative. And who's going to say it back? Ms. Fraser?
Yes, ma'am, I just have to go there, but. Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and Mayor, I'm the board. Earlier in the year, it's January thirty-first, economic development meeting as well as at a prior city council meeting, um, we discussed streamlining the economic development initiative and creating industrial development districts throughout the city of Southfield. This is an effort to revitalize our community by streamline, streamlining the process for tax abatement, creating a welcoming environment for economic development as well as, um, showing the Michigan Economic Development Corporation that we're willing to match their incentives. We discussed creating districts throughout the community tonight, um, asking that we establish industrial development districts around the metro center complex. Um, we, we will be coming back asking for other locations throughout the city, along the Telegraph corridor, the American Center, which is our smart zone, and then other areas that we deem necessary. The Southfield City Center area and the DDA, um, according to the state laws, are already, um, qualified industrial development districts, therefore it is not necessary for us to create those as specific districts. You'll remember that the Blue Cross Blue Shield Corporation relocated, um, down to the city of Detroit, which vacated a very large complex. It's composed of four towers, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-two square feet as well as an additional thirty-one point two acres of vacant land. And here's just another rendering of that location. At this time, we're asking that we establish a zone around this entire district. We understand that, um, Federal Local is planning on relocating into this site in the near future. They will be, um, requesting some assistance from the city of Southfield. Um, we've had discussions with them, however, they have not finalized their paperwork at this time. Um, it's a quick presentation here. So, um, again, this is to streamline the process when Federal Local or some of the other tenants that we've heard that have been looking at the site come to the city council and is inclined to provide them with an incentive, um, this will help streamline the process. This does not guarantee anybody, um, that we will offer them assistance, it will streamline the process by reducing the public hearing portion. And at this time, we'd like to have, um, open it up for a public hearing.
All right, this is a public hearing on the economic development initiative from a request from American Landmark Properties. If there's anyone in the audience that the right to address, this council is related to the fashion, please, your name and address for the record, please, and you have your three minutes.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullum. My address is Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. I have four questions I'd like to ask this council. Question number one, how many public hearings are to be held tonight regarding the metro center? The reason why I ask this question is that council's legal notice for this public hearing is contradictory. The introductory paragraph infers more than one public hearing, yet the notice itself contains only one request. Let me explain. First, the notice states, and I quote, "Public hearings shall be held at seven P.M." Unquote. The word hearings is a verb. Secondly, the first paragraph ends with, and I quote, "The council will consider the following related requests." Unquote. The word request is a verb and the adjective of request, related, also infers more than one request, therefore more than one public hearing. So how many public hearings tonight? Question number two, why is the owner of metro center not identified in any way in council's legal notice? Three, is it because this council wishes to cover up the fact that future tax abatement checks will be mailed out to Canada to boost the Canadian economy at the expense of the Southfield economy? Question number three, why did this city sell the metro center for just one dollar? According to the assessor's records, on October twenty-third, twenty-twelve, this city sold the metro center to Blue Cross Blue Shield for one dollar. Two days later, Blue Cross Blue Shield turned around and sold the metro center to current owner for six and a quarter million dollars. Yes, six and a quarter million. Question number four, how do I sign up for the city's deal for a dollar per red? Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to?
What's the time of the public hearing? Panel agere, PO Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. Um, I guess we are more like Detroit than we are different. It seems the new economic development is due for a dollar, i.e. the stadium with the illegits and that initiative in Detroit. I would like for someone here to answer that question. How can the city sell property for a dollar and then turn around and the recipient of that one dollar deal sell it to the Canadian company for six and a quarter million? $1 deal sell it to the Canadian company for $6.25 million? And then I just want to ask, is this establishing the district similar to economic empowerment zones, which is intended for struggling businesses? Or is this just a way, because you did finally take my recommendation to make the whole city an industrial district so that we can grant these personal property tax abatements a little easier? What's the purpose now for doing it? You thought when I mentioned it that it was a silly idea. Now you're taking my suggestions and you're doing it, but are you doing it to make the personal property abatements easier? What's the reason? And I challenge anyone up there, along with Councilman Moss and Councilman Fraser and Councilman Siber, you guys have just been so wonderful to the public, at least attempting to answer questions or getting the information and getting back with the people. But the other game before, I challenge you to be intellectually curious tonight and try to answer the question, or you can do the usual and be a little dismissive. That's okay too. Have a great evening.
All right, if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? May I ask you?
I'm sitting just a couple rows back and having a difficult time hearing you speak, Mr. President. Some of the microphones are higher than others, but some people are perfect. Their voices aren't traveling so far. My name is Geraldine Amato. I've been staying here in Southfield for a couple of years. I don't believe I'll be a permanent resident here unless I get stranded here. I have some problems in returning to where I hail from, but we have the same problems in New Mexico as you have here in Michigan. And I'd like to call out the overall picture of what we're facing as a nation. This area here, Southfield, was once a farming community where the people had more control on the necessities of their lives. All that being forfeited for this code that comes through the United States, commercial code, that's imposed upon the municipal corporations, which is the cities in this nation. So the terminology indicates where we are. We're building against nature. We're forcing.
Your comments have.
Economics, this is related. Economics, this is public comment. Economic development initiative. This development is working against nature and against our ability to sustain ourselves over time. Use the term revitalization. The core word in that revitalization is vital, living life. These things we are considering as development are contrary to life. They're dead industries as far as vitality is concerned. Industrial development districts. Industrial development is causing us to lose an environment that is conducive to our vitality, our healthfulness, mental, emotional, as well as physical. The human being is part of nature, not part of all this since day atrocities that are being perpetrated under these industrial development districts. Southeast Michigan economic comeback. The only way this Southfield, Michigan, or Southeast Michigan is going to have a comeback, if we return closer to nature and restore the natural order and the natural economic order. We cannot do it by continuing to squelch the natural order, the natural environment that the human being is most vital living within.
Your time is up, Mr. Mullum. Thank you very much.
All our time is up as we continue in these trends. Any questions?
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this council as it relates to the Economic Development Initiative?
My name is Spreckbacher, 24201 Garner. And long, as I've lived here 20 years, I've been interested in tax abatements and I wonder if we're separating the creation of an industrial zone from anyone particularly interested in that zone? Because the tax abatement policy is pretty specific about the applicant and what the obligations of the applicant are, as well as the job of the city assessor, pursuant to all of this. His job, which may be.
Spreckbacher, can you speak into the mic, please?
His job may be identified here in several numbers and letters, and he's listening, that no later than January 10th, immediately following the second year after the issuance of the industrial facilities exemption certificate, and annually thereafter, the company shall submit a letter to the city assessor. This is the 10th of January, no later. Every tax abatement recipient in an industrial facility exemption is supposed to provide a letter to our city assessor. The number of new jobs identified in the IFT application within a two-year period and the actual number of new jobs, so as which we keep track. If these people promise to bring jobs, we want to see those jobs listed, current number of employees and their residents. We want to see every job, every new person, and where they live. We're being told this is grading jobs for Southfield. This provision demands the residences of each new employee that should be collected no later than January 10th, every year. So we could have watched the year. Annual projected costs differ substantially from projected costs, give explanation. They promised to invest $10 million, and they can invest less, they got to explain it, no later than January 10th, every year. Estimated project cost given in the application and the actual project cost. There's supposed to be some compliance and an obligation on the part of the assessor, who hasn't heard much of this. And I don't think he collects this information from current abatement recipients, much less the erasure that took place of all tax abatement recipients prior to 2009.
You have ten minutes, Mr. Mullum.
If the.
I mean, you can talk that, right there. I have ten seconds.
I'm sorry.
You have, you have ten seconds.
Well, you. I have a late of my going.
I didn't mean to distract you. Go ahead.
If the IFT was granted on the basis of job retention and the number of employees at the time of the application compared to the current number of employees, so we can see if there was a met gain in employment.
Okay, your time is up.
As well as the affirmative action.
Your time is up.
Ancient phrase, you may have grown up without knowing affirmative action, but it's supposed to be a part of, part of the.
Mr. Mullum, your time is up.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Can we finish the public hearing first?
I'd like to ask, ask a question.
Can we finish the public hearing first and then out? Let me finish the public hearing first and then we'll get to your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this council as it relates to the Economic Development Initiative? See, now would declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Ray.
Okay, I'd like to delve into this, what Fred Mucker said.
Can't hear you.
I said, I would like to delve into what Fred Mucker is, is talking about. Now, if I need information, do I go to the assessor? I'll go to you.
I do work with the assessor, and we do meet with the companies that we do grant assistance to each year and gather data on that, so.
All right, so there is a record, what you did, what you.
That's correct.
Right, can we see it? Not now.
Yeah, and I have provided that information to council meetings.
Of course, I expect that. Okay, I will call the ordinary, ask questions. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Um, Ms. Ward.
Not to interrupt, but when you have, I'd like that we speak to some of the discussion of that we sold Blue Cross property for $1. You want me to do that? I believe what's being referred to is, at the time Blue Cross sold the property, there was a discrepancy in some of the legal descriptions of easements for some public utilities. And when they were going, getting ready to sell, there were these discrepancies in the legal description. And so what happened was, we corrected those. The issues, new, the new easements were issued, and we quit claiming our interest in the old deficient easements for $1. The city never owned the property, and that was a technical correction of some legal descriptions and easements. We never sold the property for $1, and we never owned the property. We never owned the property.
In fact, we never sold the property. Thank you so much, Ms. Ward. Mr. Moss.
Yeah, about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, Mr. Freeman gave a presentation to council about all the tax abatements that have been granted and the follow-up, what was abated, what was collected by the city. And I just wanted to just reiterate or reclarify the follow-up process with these companies that are granted abatements, because I know your staff and you do work to make sure that once this is granted, once that council approves of it, there's follow-up, there's data being recorded, and we're making sure that they are contributing to a healthy economy.
Absolutely, I do meet with them regularly. Mr. Mullum was referring to companies that would grant 198 abatements to. So there is a difference between the 328, which is 100% personal property, and the 198, which is a 50% real, 50% personal. They had different requirements per the state law, and we follow the requirements. We do meet with the companies regularly and stay on top of them. We do encourage them to utilize the Michigan, Southfield, Michigan works for hiring. We work with Lawrence Technological University to ensure that they have good quality candidates to hire, and we monitor them regularly to ensure that there are values that they stated that they will be putting into the property that they need and or they will go.
Anything else?
Madam President.
And Mr. Ward.
I just want to state that we are only establishing the district in the metro center area. We are not granting any abatements. And it's not uncommon for communities throughout the state to have previously established a district. There is no tax abatement being granted with this action. And this is being used as an effort to attract a business, and we saw Federal Mobile is one of them. Now, they will have the right to come back and ask us for the abatement under 328 on the personal property, but tonight's action only establishes the district. And this is part of the city's activities to market and get this property back in the, on the tax rolls. It should be noted, Blue Cross Blue Shield paid the city zero in taxes. This actually puts this property back of the new ownership, it is on the taxes, and as the building is occupied, there will be additional tax revenue coming to the city of Southfield.
And when you look at, when the city council adopted, the goal is for establishing the industrial development district, it reduces property taxes to assist in rehabilitation of voting facilities, to enhance the overall tax base of the city of Southfield, and to attractiveness for the community and to engage in economic development and viability for the city and the individual community situation when we look at what our goals are. So at this time, we're entertaining a motion.
Sure.
Mr. Fraser.
Well, unless you want to get a motion out of the.
Why don't we take a motion and then we'll take a question.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the district.
We need to support it.
It's industrial.
We have a motion by Councilman Popovich, supported by Councilwoman Seymour, Mr. Fraser.
Yes, and this is to Mr. Zorn. The reason that Blue Cross didn't pay taxes, and I'm sure that there are folks out there that wonder, you know, why wouldn't they be paying taxes? They're a non, they're a nonprofit, and nonprofits don't pay the taxes. So now that they've moved away, now it becomes fair game to put it back on the tax roll. But they did pay a pilot. They paid a fee, it wasn't a tax, but they paid a fee every year to the city of Southfield.
You mentioned how much?
Uh, yeah.
$60.
Yeah, well.
You definitely did it.
Yeah.
All right.
It's a different honor for you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, motion by Mr. Popovich, supported by Amy Seymour, to establish an industrial development district as a new for the metro center complex. On the favor?
Aye.
If opposed, motion stays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to item C, and that is the last item of the public hearing, and then it's a GP 1267.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mayor Lawrence and council. Item before you is a GP 1267, SP 1314, special use and site plan review request of Sam Bashir to establish a specific area on his property for limited dealer vehicle sale, property located at 22800 West 8 Mile Road. Mr. Bashir is seeking a Class D vehicle license from the state of Michigan that will allow him to buy used vehicles and then sell them on the property. When this item originally came before staff and the planning commission, there were some concerns that this would be a conventional used car lot on the property. However, Mr. Bashir noted that vehicles would be sold over the internet only, similar to what he currently does in the Department of Bills. With that in mind, staff worked with the city attorney and put together special use conditions for approval, which include that the petitioner would not be able to operate in traditionally used vehicle dealership, that sales would be limited to the internet only, he would only be permitted to have a limited number of vehicles, not to exceed 39 placed on the property in a designated aerial site, that there would be no vehicles displayed for sale on the property, and that the owner would refrain from use of any balloons, banners, flags, signs, et cetera, as a means of advertising vehicles for sale. And Mr. Bashir did agree to those terms. The planning commission recommended favorable consideration of special use and site plan on March 26, 2014. And at the council site plan committee meeting, the committee recommended that Mr. Bashir contact the Boulevard Association and apply for their facade improvement program and complete a facade renovation within 12 to 18 months. I do have a short video presentation for you at this time.
GP 1267, SP 1314 is a special use and site plan review request of Sam Bashir of Bashir and Sons Incorporated to establish a specific area on the site for limited dealer vehicle sales on properties located at 22800 West 8 Mile Road on the north side of 8 Mile Road between Luster and Burt Roads in Section 33 of the city. The subject property is owned I-1 Industrial. The property to the north is owned R-1 Single Family Residential and I-L Light Industrial. The property to the west is owned R-1 Single Family Residential and I-1 Industrial. The properties to the south across 8 Mile Road are owned for commercial uses within the city of Detroit. The property to the east is owned I-L Light Industrial. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with the advanced auto recyclers building that is surrounded on two sides by an eight-foot-high string wall. The property to the north is undeveloped. The property to the west is a vacant parking lot and undeveloped land. The properties to the south across 8 Mile Road are developed with various commercial uses within the city of Detroit. And the property to the east is developed with a Sam Club retail store and a Taco Bell restaurant. The site contains 2.02 acres of land with 200 feet of runage on 8 Mile Road and a depth of 435.76 feet. The special use request is to permit the establishment of a specified area on the site for limited dealer vehicle sale, which is a non-industrial use or use not related to manufacturing within the I-1 Industrial District. The proposed site plan indicates the establishment of a specific area on the site for a limited dealer vehicle sale in conjunction with the current advanced auto recyclers system. The parking required for the site is 16 spaces with 17 provided on-site. There are no proposed changes to the facade of the building. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use and site plan were, special use and. plan were special use in site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance. The petitioner is to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting industrial use for this parcel.
Council, the planning department recommends approval of GP 1267, SP 1304, with the conditions attached and for the reasons noted in this resolution. Mr. Bashir is here this evening to answer his questions and comments.
All right, Mr. Bashir.
Hi, how are you today? My name is Sam Bashir.
Can I hear you?
My name, I'm the owner, I'm sorry, my name is Sam Bashir. I'm the owner of 22800 West Eight Mile Road. I own, I own, operate the business of advanced auto recyclers. Been there for about a year and a half. I have renovated the place, created it, I've done quite a bit of work. Worked with the city of Southfield, worked with Sarah and Terry and everybody in the city planning. It has came a long way, and we're planning to actually make it better and better hopefully every year. Along with that, we're kind of trying to get the business to do better and so we can move forward with it, and we're hoping that we can use a small portion of it to improve our income or earn more income by getting more people, more traffic and so forth. The amount of space that we're requesting to use, the 39 car spots, I think, we calculated it was about 7% give or take, it's not a huge portion at all. Currently, I have cars parked over there obviously dismantled. Instead of the cars being dismantled, now they can be cars that are going to be either for sale or cars that, you know, there could be for sale. And that's basically what it is, it's nothing big deal or anything like that.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll hear from the public first, and then the council will hold it. So this is the public hearing on June 12, 2014. As it relates to the special use request of Mr. Sam Bashir to establish a limited dealer vehicle sale.
Are we all set?
We may be.
Okay, thank you. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 4037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm in support of this public hearing here, and I think it was made clear to the residents that the current license that he had allowed him to take late model recycling and dismantle vehicles, and that the B license would allow him the license that he needs to sell cars that are salvageable. He should be applauded for having a clean business, having spent some money on renovations and modifications, and he didn't ask for a tax abatement. So that's pretty good, even with maybe this district being considered an industrial development district. But I have one question, if any of you may know the answer. And again, I want to thank Councilman Moss, Frasier, and Cypher for always attempting to answer the people and getting back with us when we reach out and asking those questions and things that we don't quite understand. But is this the same business that had something to do with the dispatch business that came before council, so it's a different business?
Yeah, I made it to the chair, it's also a completely different business.
Okay, so I'm in support of this, and I hope you guys are too. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak swiftly to this matter?
It's, my name is Geraldine Almatto, here in Southfield. It's clear that this is not a hearing of the public, it's, what, endurance of the public appearing here. If they don't say things that are in tune with the modus operandi of the municipal corporation. Now, the automobile is choking the environment in this area. From a natural environment of farming and maintaining the vitality of an area to this industrial development district is a move against life towards death. The hospitals are doing a booming business, that's, works in with the agenda. And we, on this level here, refuse to do anything other than what the absentee and overlords dictate. That's what the municipal corporation is about. It's a subsidiary of the unlawful central government in Washington, DC, a corporate enterprise. We're all being maneuvered and deceived, and lots of us are happy to get the little kickbacks that they give us. Legal kickbacks, and I'm talking about behind-the-scenes kickbacks, some people get those, but the rewards that we get are like trinkets that have no value in the long term. They only sustain us for a short time. And when the mastermind and the overlords decide to cut us off from what they're giving us for the temporary time, we have nothing to fall back on because we have no control of anything that affects our vitality. We do need a revitalization, but it's not going to happen by continuing to go along with the dictates of those who now control the wealth of this nation and tell us how we can allocate it and where we can spend it. Automobiles used to be a way of getting from point A to point C, now it's a whole lot more to an economy than a transportation mode. It's choking the air, we have all kinds of waste because we cash them out and put them in a junkyard. It's good to use used vehicles if they're going to last 15, 20, 30 years, but we see that most people and the automotive industry have depended on throwaway, throwaway resources in order to maintain an industry for its own sake, not for the purpose of transporting us in a meaningful way, but we worship their idols.
We have 10 seconds, please.
In my last 10 seconds, there's no reason why one of these doors cannot be left ajar and open so people could physically...
Okay, and your time is up.
Yes, because one of the open, it's not disturbing anything, there's no traffic outside.
No traffic outside.
Rude person, I heard that you are a Christian minister by profession.
Your time is expired, and I've asked you to leave.
Oh, come on down, my head's twisted out.
You would try to, but wait until that's happening.
Yeah, I know.
All right, if there is anyone else in the audience that would like to address this council at this time? Do you think so?
Madam President, my name is Gerard Moan. My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037. Council's legal notice for this public hearing, GP 1267, is improperly written because said notice fails to describe the nature of this request. As prescribed by state law, Public Act 110 of 2006 states these six important words, and I quote, "Describe the nature of the request," unquote. Just six simple words, but still, this council failed that simple test, that simple six-word test. This notice states only that this is a special use request, but there are 13 different types of special uses in the city code. So which use, which special use of the 13 are we talking about here tonight? Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing that we'll declare the public hearing over the council.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Fracassi.
I will move the special use request of Sam Bashir and Sons to establish a specific area on the site for limited dealer vehicle sales to establish a Class B vehicle license.
Support. We have a motion by Councilman Fracassi, supported by Councilwoman Moss, to approve the GP 1267. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move to the site plan as well. Mr. Frasier?
Yeah, I made it to the chair, a presentation that I gave prior to the site use space will go along with the site plan as well.
Motion to approve.
Madam Chair? I move SP 1314 site plan review request of Sam Bashir to establish a specific area on the site for limited dealer vehicle sales, state Michigan Class B vehicle license, support.
We have a motion by Councilman Fracassi, supported by Councilwoman Seymour, to approve SP 1314. Any questions?
Councilman Cypher supports that.
No, I heard Councilwoman Seymour, thank you.
But you heard her, didn't you?
I heard her, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Fracassi, supported by Councilwoman Seymour, to approve SP 1314. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We decided this site plan, SP 1314. Mr. Frasier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Your next item is SP 1312. This is the site plan review request of Mr. Joe Verizer of Lawrence Technological University to construct a 42,250 gross square foot addition connecting the science and engineering buildings on the LTU campus, property located at 21,000 West 10 Mile Road. Mr. Verizer, as well as the developing team on this project with municipal council on a couple of occasions, and have presented the public addition for new classrooms, labs in offices, and is here again this evening along with LTU president, Dr. Monhill. And again, as I noted, the architects for the project seeking council's approval for this proposal. Planning commission made a favorable recommendation at their meeting of March 26, 2014, on this project. We've had a short video presentation for you at this time.
SP 1312 is a site plan review request of Joseph C. Verizer of Lawrence Technological University to construct a building addition on the existing LTU campus for new classrooms, labs, and offices. The property is located at 21,000 West 10 Mile Road on the north side of 10 Mile Road west of Northwestern Highway in section 22 of the city. The subject property, as well as the properties to the north, is zone ERO, Education Research Office. The properties to the west are zone R-4 Single Family Residential and ERO, Education Research Office. The properties to the south across 10 Mile Road are zone ERO, Education Research Office, TBR Television Radio Office Studio, and RSC Regional Center. The property to the east across Northwestern Highway is zone RSC Regional Center and V3 General Business. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with the Lawrence Technological University. The area to the north of the proposed building is developed with the science building. The area to the west is developed with the university quad and various other university buildings. The area to the south is developed with the engineering building and a wooded wetland. The area to the east is developed with the university parking lot. The site contains 59.78 acres of land with 2,261.89 feet of frontage on 10 Mile Road, 2,958.99 feet of frontage on Northwestern Highway, and a depth of 2,284.63 feet. The proposed site plan indicates the construction of a 42,259 gross square foot building addition for a new life science and engineering complex on the existing LTU campus, to access existing science and engineering buildings for use as classroom, lab, and offices. The parking required for the entire university campus, including the proposed building addition, is 2,419 spaces with 2,677 provided. The elevations indicate the use of aluminum curtain walls, carved fiberglass panels, painted corrugated metal, painted metal panels, and stretched white ETFE scrim over a metal raft wall to dump in glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance. The petitioner is to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting medical, educational institution use for this parcel.
Council, the planning department recommends approval of SP 1312 with the conditions attached and for the reasons noted in this resolution. Mr. Verizer from LTU is here this evening, as I noted, as well as other members of the team, as well as Dr. Monhill, and we do have just a brief presentation for you.
Good to be here, Mr. Frasier.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Dr. Monhill, really, would like to come forth and do some introductory comments, and then I'll speak more specifically to the building itself, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam residents, madam mayor, members of the council. It's a great pleasure for me to be with you again for a cause that I believe in. And the cause is the city government, the city citizens, and the Lawrence Technological University, join hands and combine, work together to raise the profile of the city, create more opportunity for our citizens, educational, medical, social, cultural. I was thrilled to hear the two young women who came before us earlier, who are experts in music and art and design. I think that has existed in Southfield. And my personal passion is to tap into all the various talents and opportunities exist in the city, and working with the university, and giving educational benefit to these, and raise the city's profile and strength within open county and state of Michigan. I believe that economic strength of Michigan resides, a lot of it resides in the city, and the high rises are just a testament to it, but there are many businesses, 4500 companies, small businesses, that are looking for a place to have their business in the city. And I think in my 30, almost 41 years of experience in academic field here in other countries, few things that really make an institution and the city great are that there is a medical care for all the citizens, there is good education system, and there is good governance. And we have all those ingredients in City of Southfield. I'm working passionately with prominent hospitals in other areas. We have one of the best school system, our superintendent was noted to be fourth in the country. And we have Lawrence Technological University that started with Henry Ford and revolutionized engineering profession. So we have all those ingredients, and I'm very pleased the support we have from the city, planning council, city council, mayor doctors, and others, that we work together and have a calm down relationship, that whenever we speak of Southfield, the outside world and inside citizenry know that we are working together. I think the future is bright. And this new building that we are proposing and seeking your approval is simply symbolic of progress, of growth. This building is not only the ultra wooden design attracted, so the people will maybe come to just see the building in addition to the educational opportunity within the building. And your approval means a lot to us because it shows the partnership we have with the city and city government, and it also symbolizes to the people outside that this is a place they can work in because it's very friendly to business, education, and healthcare. So we seek your approval, and we're very grateful for the support we have so far to the state. Thank you.
Please, here's... Will we agree with the...
Yes, now we would like to show you the brief video, just under two minutes, that will demonstrate the verity of the project I'll talk about. Well, that is the summary of the building. I'll tell you a little bit about it.
Beautiful.
If you'd like to. Okay, we're off to a good start. The, even on the university architect, I don't have the privilege of designing the buildings myself. I have the support of a couple of great firms. We don't build any of our buildings on the backs of our students. We do through philanthropic behavior. We have a government who believes that we can have two consultants involved to get a better product. And as a result, we have to, we insist too, that we have at least someone from the local area, most definitely. We have all the firms right here, with a lot of our students involved that are now working in those firms. So we have the privilege on this project of working with Albert Kahn and Associates, a hundred and twenty-year-old firm founded in Detroit and headquartered here in Detroit, although they have an international presence at this time. Additionally, we have to support them in adding into the design effort, a firm called Morphosis, a gentleman named Tom Mayne, who is a noted designer worldwide, who is in support of the project in the design side. And so both firms have been involved in the design of this project. So we have the best of the best, at least, at all we human. One of the things about this, by the way, I have two representatives of Albert Kahn Associates here with me tonight, because there are things I can tell you about the project that they can answer your questions in far greater detail than I could, and I would lie on them for anything that I can't handle, if that's all right with you. One of those principles is the president and CEO of Albert Kahn, and that's Albert Kahn, who happens to be in the lung of LTU, and we're proud of that. The project itself is situated on the site such that it blends in with our programs. And we didn't arbitrarily decide to link the two buildings, science and engineering. It's a demonstration of, it's a physical demonstration of a merge of programs. The two primary occupants in the facility, and there are a couple of them, but the primary ones are robotic engineering and biomedical engineering. Biomedical sounds like science, and it is, almost, the entire staff that supports the program comes out of college of arts and sciences. However, it's headquartered or owned and in the College of Engineering. Additionally, robotics, same way, it exists in both colleges. One is on the mechanics or hardware or implementation side in engineering, and the other is on the software application side that makes the robotics possible. So it's a blending of two colleges and merger of curriculum and merger of faculty into the delivery process of education. And therefore, it became very important to not only have that philosophical joining with an actual physical joining. Imagine pushing the carts out in the snow in the wintertime, trying to carry facilities to take into labs, it would be impractical. So it was only natural that it be placed where we had placed it. As far as materials and that, that we've done on the site and for the building, we're going to lead silver once again. And so we're proud of that, so we are being demonstrative of our interest in sustainable design, as always. We have stormwater management provisions on the site, incorporating more than we need to be providing technically in terms of the runoff from the building itself. The materials are sustainable materials from approximate locations that are well within the certification process. Materials are all durable, traditionally in nature, just applied a little differently than you might normally find. We have traditional wall construction with an exterior layer of metal siding, in some cases a perforated metal siding, some different cases, solid, solid, and it's a corrugated metal applied on the building. We have traditional window band of windows tied on the wall behind the scrim. The scrim is a, it's called ETFE, and it has a technical name that means something, but it's a polymer product, translucent. I think of it in terms of an awning that shades the building, allows as much light through as material you use on the face of it. That said, what I would do is open it up to any questions you might have, and then I'll call on the support of the firm that have waited here tonight to answer anything.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Moss?
Yes, not a question, actually, because we, I would say, since I've been on council, we've had such a detailed presentation of a site plan or of a vision. And we've had another meeting, the committee of the whole meeting, where we had this presentation. And I said this then, and I want to echo this sentiment, I think we could do a half-hour program on city cable fifteen about the city, LTU, the partnership that we have, the vision for the city of Southfield. We can't promote this enough, because LTU is such an anchor, such a rock in our community. You're not going anywhere, in fact, you're expanding, investing, and this is what's going to keep Southfield vital and growing in the decades to come. So I would love to see cable fifteen, at the direction of council, prepare a program about where is LTU going, how is the city of Southfield partnering with it, and certainly include snippets from the video, which was absolutely, just polishedly done, and really clearly says what's going on over there at Ten Mile Road, and something we're proud of.
Mr. Spence.
I said this before, in my next life, I want to come back as an architecture student at LTU. It's a, you have a Padores School, everything that is going on there is still cutting-edge, and I'm going to, I couldn't contain myself when I saw the video, because you took it one notch up from the last presentation, but, you know, it's just a great thing for the city of Southfield to have LTU here and all of that creativity and that futuristic thinking that goes on under campus. And I, too, am very proud to have this town and gallon relationship with our city and our tech. So, yes, I have a very strong vote in support of this project.
Now, Mr. Lane.
You know, something, I think I really want to hear the faces reality, real life. I agree with everything you're doing, and I vote for it, but Mr. Moss means very, very well, but we have, there's a Pandora box, that if it's open to one, we will have to do it to all. There are ways of doing this, publications and all that, but we cannot afford to open a Pandora box and put you on TV, and then the others will come forward, want the same treatments. And we're not in business to be in the design business or photographic or movie business or anything like that. It's only my own opinion, I don't object, but we have to be real. We'll do everything we can, in our publications and all that, but when it comes to the cable and TV, I think, I think that's a, that's a problem. It's only my own opinion, I'm not, I'm not against you. We'll do everything to help you, but I think we have to stop somewhere, because all the other corporations will come to us and say, you do the same for us. We can't do it. We can't afford it when the things are going now, but we're not, we can become a publicity agent with just one corporation or a school.
We'd be having to follow whatever lead the city gives us on that.
I didn't hear that.
We'd be having to follow whatever lead the city wants to give us on that. And I'm the associate by Councilman Moss, and we're certainly willing to cooperate if he wanted to, that would be a.
Well, we're not even going to pay for it, but don't expect anybody for it. But we just can't open the door for all corporations to do the same, because we have good corporations in the city that need the same help as we give you, your school.
I understand.
It's only my opinion.
Mr. Lane, are you there, Mr. Lane? Mr. Fraser.
Yes, one of your buildings has a geothermal heat. Does this building have that?
No, this building will be treated differently. What's unfortunate with this one, while we're going for lead silver, I wouldn't call it unfortunate, is that everything we're doing is doing internal to the building. A lot of it is done visual or easy branding, like it was at the student services center. So we are complying with all the requirements to get to at least the lead certification. We'd like to go a step further, or close, but not quite there. So things will be in the inherent design of the systems within the building itself. So it will not be geothermal this time.
Okay. And I'm also very, very supportive of what's going on over there. And I, you know, I think the growth that has taken place at LTU since I've moved into town is, and it's, you know, through the three presidents that I've been involved with since I've been here, I've known since I've been here, you're really a jewel in the city of Southfield. And the way things are going, it sounds like you'll nominally be lead silver, but you may go for lead middle, you might go over the goal. Yeah, but I'm going to take a slightly different approach than one of my colleagues, and that is, and I'm going to support the other one. And I think our cable fifteen, really, I'm looking for businesses within the city of Southfield that are doing spectacular things, and putting them on cable fifteen so that everyone is to see what's going on in the city of Southfield, so they can be proud of it, talk to their friends and relatives, and say, look at my town, this is what's going on in my town. So, while Councilman Lance says we can't open it up to all businesses, I think we should. I think we ought to, I think we ought to celebrate all of those good things, and I'm talking about small businesses, medium businesses, large businesses, because Southfield is a vibrant, a vibrant community. And to quote our DC city administrator, we're going to be the engine that turns the Oakland County around. And keep on doing the things you're doing, and I want to keep trying to do the things I'm doing to make Southfield a better place. Thank you.
Mayor Warren. Yes, one of the things we have shown, we have been shown by all of your commotions to excellence and consistently upping your game, as I would say, to be able to be competitive, not only here in Michigan, but in the country and in the world. And I'm very impressed, very proud, and I've said it numerous times. But what excites me about our partnership is that there's always something, you know, if we have a slow day, LTU does something, has something brilliant to add. And when you guys take a breath, then we bring something up, but there's a constant flow of positive innovations happening in this area. And when we talk about town and down, we say that, but the meaning to me, and the one that keeps me engaged with LTU, is the fact that those brilliant minds that are entrusted to you, our children, our community, that you guide them through the process in a safe environment, now with technology, wonderful housing options, all those things, to create them and take them from children to young adults. And then we, as a community, support you in that effort with our public safety, we're redeveloping our city center with you and us. We are actually having a development request that's coming forward tonight, that's based on LTU. And so economic development is happening because of your vision. To the president, I can't tell you how happy I am. We broke laws recently on housing units. So it's, that town down is going to continue, as long as we work together, continue to raise our level of being competitive as a city, branding us as the center of it all and the place to be. So I want to thank you, it's exciting, and it's going to bring even more people to our city. And once a person gets an opportunity to see and live and experience our city, we know that that helps us a lot. So thank you.
Do.
All right. Mr. Vasquez.
Now, I'd like to just welcome Mr. President here this evening. I go back to Dr. Buell, so I go back a few years, and I've seen LTU just continue to grow, and we're very, very proud of what you're doing, and I feel the pleasure of saying that I hope it succeeds, move adventures as you go forward, and I'll talk to you about maybe a pharmaceutical or whatever we can expand. And I think that all of us up here are very supportive of your school, and the talent that you bring before us, by the way, you know, it's amazing, I tell them, Mr. Fraser here, very soon we won't have actors and actresses, we'll go make our own, and have our own movie. But it's really phenomenal the technology that we have today, and I wish you guys great success in the future.
Mr. Lane.
Yes, I don't disagree with what everybody says about it, and I, and I agree, but our cable system here at the office is paid by, by the people's franchise fee that goes to Comcast, and they give us back money, so it comes from the people. If we gave you something, maybe, maybe we could have a set fee to do what you want to do on our cable system. We have people working, it cost us a fortune. Why do it for nothing? Let us be part of the business and make something out of it, and help us succeed also. It's a good idea, I'm not against it. Whatever they're saying is true. Whatever they're saying is true. I agree. But you have to be, the corporation has to give something to the city to exist. We have people working and making a salary and everything. You just can't come in, then Joe Blow could have come in with his automobile company, could ask us to do the same thing. General Motors, just free. Everybody will come into us. Am I right? I mean, am I wrong?
Mr. Lane.
And President, if I may very quickly respond. Councilman Lance, the idea of cable TV was not Laura's text. We are happy to accept whatever you direct us to. We did not give you a proposal.
I still think it's a great idea.
But that is not our proposal. So we don't have to defend it. That's not our proposal.
Mr. Chair.
You know something, wait a minute.
We have a few more people that like to cry.
I don't care. You know, I'm not a fool. I'm not a fool. But maybe I'm more visionary than anybody else on this council.
Sure.
Okay, I want us to last a long time.
Absolutely.
I won't be here. You will be here yet. And everybody's laughing, they're joking about it. We should give you everything for you to everybody. I say, no, we're a business too, believe it or not.
Mr. Lance, I agree with you. We did not propose and ask for that.
I know. Mr. Moss made up the idea, suggested it. They all agree. I don't agree. Well, I agree and in effect, pay for it.
In fact, I agree with you that it should be proposed all of the time. We did not, it's not an issue we have. We appreciate your opinion.
I'm not claiming you for any of that. You have a right to accept it if they give it to you.
Well, if the council directs us in good partnership, we'll accept it, but it is neither our proposal nor our idea. Therefore, we came for a different purpose. If one of you proposes an idea, we're willing to consider it, but it's not our proposal.
I can say it was your proposal.
All right. Mr. Lane, second. Is there any other questions? Uh, Mr. Moore.
All right. I'm sorry. Um, that's great of you to change. Anna Cho. I have lived in this city for four decades. I didn't want to live here. I really came here kicking and screaming. I said, "I don't wanna live in the suburbs. I wanna live in here in the city." And I've lived in Detroit for a long time. Or I wanna live in the country. But, um, very short time. First of all, I saw the wetlands and my dad, my dad hooked me right away, but people know that. This town, this city has a water getting under your skin and taking your blood, I think. Ann Arbor has University of Michigan. Southfield has LTU. And if you don't think I'm extremely proud of that, you don't know that you know I do.
I don't.
I've known the last four, I guess, last three presidents. I don't know the current one as well, but he's a big supporter. He's an enthusiastic man, a lot of ideas, great medical background. It's a partnership that we have. And LTU is, LTU is going to help us and has helped us draw other businesses to Southfield. So you're an important part of what we're trying to do. You know that. I hope you know that. And we wanna draw more businesses here, and without you, we wouldn't be what we are. So it's, it's a very important partnership, very strong relationship, and I think you know that, that I feel this way. I think it's huge that Albert Kahn had this big role in designing this building. I mean, they're world famous. These people have done, they are world famous. And they're based, started right here in Detroit International Hall. I knew some of those people years ago and, and related business. But I'm so proud of this school and what you've done with it and how you have developed. And I am, here's what we have to do with cable. Anything that we put on cable is going to have an outreach to other businesses. And I wanna publicize you internationally. And I think we're going to be able to do that. It's very important. You market the city and you're a huge part of that and you know it. So I'm, I'm in total support of this. I think you've done fabulous job over there. I mean, just extraordinary what you've done. It's just, I feel like, you know, my head, I'm bursting with fire with all these little chicks that are coming up. But it's wonderful and you've done a fabulous job. I mean, the history and leadership with LTU has opened a major process and you, you've sort of walked into something that you've helped, I mean, you've helped, I understand that, Mr. President, that you've done this. But it, you know, we're, we're related. We're joined. I've said that before. But we are, and it's very important. And I think anything that we can do to publicize LTU is going to help Southfield develop the new business that we need to have. So I'm in total support of it. I think it's absolutely beautiful. Those in this design, I can't, I can't say too much about it. It's just you've done a fabulous job and I compliment you. I do wanna ask one question of Jeff, if I may, at this time, just because I hadn't heard it before, but there's the woods in there and there's the wooden wetlands in there. Is any part of this development affected in the woodland area at all or is?
Yes, if I may, to the chair. All the development is happening on the upland area, so there'll be no, no weather going into the west end and all there.
Woodlands.
Or, or the woodlands. Yeah, neither one.
Woodlands are not affected. We have it mapped. Okay. I just wanted to know, we didn't know that before. But no, this is a fabulous, fabulous moving forward that you're doing there. You know, I'm just, I'm just satisfied. So yes, you got my vote.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I agree with all of my colleagues. I believe that it is just, again, a perfect partnership with LTU and the city of Southfield. I'd be very sure, Doctor. I think we're just doing great things together. And the building design is fantastic. My only challenge is going home this evening because my husband is a former employee of Albert Kahn and he graduated from North Tech. So I know his kid is gonna be very big, very proud to be a part of all of this institution. So we're gonna call him to the vote, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, we approve a site plan review of LTU. You can start at forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine. Gross square foot building addition for a new life science and community complex.
Score.
We have a motion by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve SP twelve thirteen, twelve, thirteen, twelve. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let me completely, if opposed, motion clear. Mr. Lane.
I'm for it. But yes, I'm not saying yes to agree, but to be.
I think that's perfectly fair, Mr. Lee. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
I wanna thank the council not only for the vote, for all the wonderful favorable comments you made here tonight, which will air out in the home fifteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening. The next item on our agenda is SP fifteen oh nine.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Your next item is SP thirteen oh nine, a site plan review request of Mark Drain, Rod Boy Architects, to construct a nineteen thousand gross square foot retail restaurant mixed use development with drive-through on the south side of the building on the Traveler's Tower property facing Evergreen Road. Property located at two six five 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 Evergreen Road. Mr. Mark Drain and Mr. Matt Wallerstein have been before council on a couple of occasions and have presented this particular project to you. And from those particular meetings, a number of things have happened. The petitioner has met with the Evergreen Meadows Condominium Association. If you recall, there were some issues that the condo association did have with regard to the particular project, and the petitioner has, and has met with them to resolve those issues, including one of those being some additional landscape along the north property line. They've also made some revisions to the building facade based upon council's comments. Council had asked at the COW meeting March seventh, the additional rendering of the south side of the new building, as seen from across the street by the library, be submitted, and that rendering is part of your package this evening. Mr. Drain and Mr. Wallerstein are here again, seeking council approval. Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation at the regular meeting of March twenty-six, two thousand fourteen on this project. And you have a short video for you.
SP thirteen oh nine is a site plan review request of Mark Drain of Rod Boy Architects on behalf of the owner, Southfield HM Development, for the construction of a retail restaurant mixed use development with a drive-through on the south end of the proposed building on property located at two six five 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 Evergreen Road. The property is located on the west side of Evergreen Road between Civic Center Drive and I six ninety-six Service Drive and section twenty-two of the city. The subject property is zone overlay development district with underlying RSE Regional Center. The properties to the north are zone OS Office Service and RT attached single family residential. The properties to the west across Central Park Boulevard and south are zone RSE Regional Center. The properties to the east across Evergreen Road are zone R two single family residential. With regard to existing land uses, the subject property is developed with the Traveler's Tower Building. The area to the north of the proposed new building is developed with an office building and the Evergreen Meadows condominium. The area to the west is developed with the Fox Sports Building. The area to the south is developed with an office building and the TGI Fridays Restaurant. The properties to the east across Evergreen Road are developed with the Southfield Public Libraries, Civic Center Complex, and the Southfield Reform Presbyterian Church. The total site contains eleven point four acres of land with six hundred and fifty-five point two five feet of runage on Evergreen Road and a depth of eight hundred and twenty-two point four eight feet. The submitted site plan proposes the construction of a nineteen thousand gross square foot retail restaurant mixed use development with drive-through on the south end of the proposed building. Parking required for the site is one hundred and forty-three spaces with one hundred and forty-three provided for the overlay development district agreement. The proposed building elevations reflect a mix of furnished flats, easies, metal canopies and panels, CMU and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance. The petitioners to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department to crime prevention areas regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting Southfield City Center subarea for this council. Provisions of the OGG Overlay Development District Development Agreement.
Council and planning department recommend approval of SP thirteen oh nine with the conditions attached and for the reasons as noted in this resolution. As I noted, Mr. Drain and Mr. Wallerstein, from both here, we answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to move site plan thirteen oh nine.
Score.
We have a motion by Mr. Cybers, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve SP thirteen oh nine. Any questions? Council, any more?
Um, we had some concerns from residents, and I think some who met with, with them. Were all of those issues resolved? Are any residents here from that conference about? Let her hear.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke, I talked basically today with both, myself and my property manager at the pride, school time, on site, travel.
Yeah, I can't hear you. Could you pull up?
Sorry. Sure. So since we, I guess, before we were previously in front of the city council in the study session, and we, both my property manager at the, at the building and I attended the, at the stage at the time, we attended the board of managers meeting for the Evergreen Meadows, you know, right? Exactly. And most of what we discussed actually pertained to just the, the way in which the two properties interacted, you know, prior to this site plan application meeting before, in particular under the prior ownership of the building, you know, we got to know what their concerns were, taking steps to change our operation to address their concerns. We primarily relate to nuisance after hours and.
And noise, noise issues.
Yeah, exactly. I think, I think we've enabled, I spoke again, actually today with their, the association's property manager, who's kind of, you know, acted the interface between the association and my property manager and himself, who's been a regular type, been a regular type of gentleman, and also in such case of the, the council president, or the association president. There was one residual concern with regard to that, our scheduled for exercising our generator in the Tower Two building. We had agreed to, to eliminate the scheduling of that activity on Sunday. There was a miscommunication between the building engineer and the property manager and that three weeks ago, there was a test on Sunday, not gonna happen again. It was a simple miscommunication. The property manager was on vacation for, it was, it was oversight. We, we reached out to them. We also reached out to them subsequently about what we're doing to the property, the renovation work for our parking deck, even though that's not immediately proximal with their property, you know, we're just trying to scrutinize the procedure or just touch a base of that on anything that may impact them and ask them to do the same with us and just try to establish good neighborly relations really, in a sense of anything having to do with the outlaws.
Right. And, and they mentioned some problems with noise with the dumpster. And I don't know if that was related to your building. I know you knew, knew, but I don't know who, you know, where that came from, but that's...
The whole trash compactor is at the property. They unfortunately face the north and are unshielded. So the residents, you know, it's pretty clear what you're standing back there. You can see exactly that that just echoes off the building.
They're telling us about the hours of the, of the dumpster speed.
Yeah, I mean, we were doing that within the rules, but we just further restricted it so that our clean staff knows not to use the compactor after ten PM, which was in accordance with the agreement. We came to that agreement with the, with the association. We agreed, we wouldn't use the compactor after ten. We, we were at the hours during which our tractor, our original contractor could do pickups, to hours outside of ten PM, I think, to six AM. I think so far that's been going smoothly. I think most of these issues are very simple.
I think the dumpster hours are not three, four, seven.
Is that right?
Aren't you just?
Uh, you don't recall what the dumpster hours are at the moment.
The dumpster, our dumpster gets picked up like once, twice a month at least. So, you know, there's, we can honestly revisit that. There's further restrictions needed, but whatever we did was to the, you know, we enforced our agreement with the, with the association. And then presented to them this landscaping plan to replace the existing deciduous trees on our side of the property line with a row of spruce trees that would, when, when they grow to maturity, would provide a very effective visual landscape on the area year-round for the residents.
I know your intent was, was to not be a nuisance to the residents. I'm sure that, I think if there were concerns, maybe someone would have been here to speak about that.
Yeah, I think they just, there was not, there hadn't been any communication with the prior owner and to date, there hadn't been communication with us. And that's, you know, like I said, last time we met, that's my fault. So I'm glad we've established that line of communication, you know, irrespective of this out parcel development. I think it's actually, it's a big good neighborly thing to do. I think it just felt that, you know, a little bit less than the dark in that regard.
I know. I know I was not entirely agreeing whenever you were talking to some of the residents and I think you were very sincere in wanting to resolve any of those problems. I think we don't have any issues.
You're so.
It's a riot. You certainly have.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good plan. I'm not crazy on the drive through, but I understand why you're doing it and the fact that it comes around the back of the building as opposed to the front is, makes a difference. So I'm prepared to.
All right. We have a motion on the table by Mr. Cybers, supported by Mr. Fraser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion clear. So you're all clear. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
I wanna thank you for being so patient with this. It's gonna be a nice project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, LTU, you are a great organization.
Do you wanna have a video?
Yeah. No, I said I don't need a video.
We do want a video. You know, I mean, surely you've got to showcase the businesses in the projects that are happening here in Southfield, so that just needs to happen. All right, we'll go to SP thirteen thirteen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Next item is SP thirteen thirteen, a site plan review request of... Next slide is SP 1313, the site plan review request of SRI Energy LLC to constructing 6,179 gross square foot carport with solar panels on the roof and two vehicle charging stations north of the existing 1800 law firm building, properly located 26700 Lotsa Road. Representatives from SRI Energy have been before council to present this proposed project. As it was noted within those meetings, the owner of the building, Mr. Ari Crash, is a big advocate of using renewable energy solutions, and the addition of this project will not only reduce his own energy consumption, but he also hopes that this will be a great example to his community on how solar energy can be used for their properties as well. We have Mr. Calapoli here this evening from SRI Energy to present this project, and seeking council's approval for it. The planning commission made a favorable recommendation at the regular meeting of March 26, 2014 on this project, and I do have a short video for you at the time.
SP 1313 is a site plan review request of SRI Energy LLC on behalf of the owner, Ari Crash of Northwestern Highway LLC, to construct a carport with two vehicle charging stations on property located at 26700 Lotsa Road, on the east side of Lotsa Road between Northwestern Highway and I-696, and Section 22 of the city. The subject property is zoned RSE Regional Center. The properties to the north across I-696 are zoned V3 General Business. The property to the west consists of Lotsa Road and Northwestern Highway right of way. The property to the south and across Northwestern Highway are zoned V3 General Business, OS Office Service, ERO Education Research Office, and R2 Single Family Residential. The properties to the east are zoned V3 General Business and ERO Education Research Office. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with the 1800 law firm building. The area north of the proposed carport is developed with the I-696 freeway. The area to the west is developed with the Sunrise Donut Shop and Road right of way. The area to the south is developed with the 1800 law firm building. The areas to the east are developed with a hotel and an office building. The site contains 4.3 acres of land with 127.62 feet of frontage on Lotsa Road, 267.11 feet of frontage on Northwestern Highway, and a depth of 647.81 feet. The proposed site plan indicates the construction of a 6,179 gross square foot carport with two vehicle charging stations in the existing parking lot north of the 1800 law firm building. The parking required for the site is 203 spaces with 360 provided on site. The proposed elevations indicate use of galvanized pallets and beams for the carports and solar panels. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were: Site Plan Review Standards of the zoning ordinance, Solar Energy Systems Standards in Article 4, Section 5.60b of the zoning ordinance. The petitioners to obtain a waiver of 35.62 feet of front yard stepback from the zoning board of appeals for the carport, 75 feet required, 39.38 feet proposed. Petitioners to obtain a waiver of 30.26 feet of rear yard stepback from the zoning board of appeals for the carport, 75 feet required, 44.74 feet proposed. The petitioners to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department to Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting City Center SubArea for this parcel.
Council, the planning department recommends approval of SP 1313 with the conditions attached and for the reasons noted in this resolution. Mr. Calapoli is here this evening again to answer any questions that you may have, and we probably will end up having another presentation on the screen behind you as part of the Calapoli's presentation.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, council. Want to just go through a high-level presentation here with respect to the scope of the project. By, once we are done with this project, it's going to be the first clean tech building from what we see from the renewable energy space, or green business we are in, with the things that we are doing here, solar panels up on the roof and also on the carports here, and we're doing a lot of energy conservation things and LED lighting and all that. So, the scope here is to just talk more on the carport. I'm going to go through the presentation in a high level about what we are as a company, and then go through some examples on how the solar system works. So, our vision is to create a sustainable and green future through solar, which is what it is, and we as a company, we provide a total turnkey solutions with respect to design, engineering, audits, and also the financing, we provide the project. So, we provide a total turnkey solution from a market, commercial, industrial, municipalities, and the residential, the markets that we support. And then, being a Michigan-based company, we are proud to say that we are expanding business beyond Michigan. These are some of the examples, this is my home, that's how I started my business, put up the solar panel up on the roof, and also the deck on the back of the house, just to give you an example. And then, this is another building in, an office building in Detroit that we have done solar system, just to show an example, and how the systems, the panels that go up on the roof as an example. This is the City of River Rouge project that we have done, a municipal project. So, some of the things that, more important things from a solar perspective is, the benefits are, one is of course it saves energy because it generates energy, which is a clean energy. Of course, the going green, and also the savings from going solar, there are savings with respect to going green. This is a typical solar system, just showing you a simple illustration on how it operates. You have sun's energy coming up and hitting the roof, where you have the solar panels, that's the number one, and they're all stringed together, brought it down with DC power to AC and converted to a throw-inverter for AC power, and it's connected to the systems and electrical systems in your office or basement complex. That's how the system operates. And this is the scope that we need, seeking improvement here with respect to the size of the carport. Technology, the solar, needs a lot of real estate, in other words, footprint, and we are offsetting combined technology around 60% of the bill for Ari right now, as far as the scope is concerned. So, we need space with respect to the project, so we are requesting approval on this carport and those are the renderings of the project. In addition, we are also putting two electric vehicle charging stations as part of the scope Some of the things that you might have seen in the video, the communities talking about going solar and how the communities are promoting sustainability. So, these are the carbon footprint that the city can claim once we have the project up and running. That is something that we look at as one of the Southfields flagship project in its own way with respect to the contribution from Southfield. So, that's, that's a high level. I'll take questions on.
All right, thank you, council.
Let's move Site Plan 1313.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Snyder, supported by Mr. Moss to approve SP 1313. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion clear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, can you turn the volume thing on? It's a little dark in here.
They'll pull.
They'll come back. Okay, we need to communicate for a right, agenda. And the first person that we recognize is Mr. Fred Wong first. And, Mr. Buckley, you can give that information to the first, if you have something to share, but you have five minutes to address.
Three.
We have three minutes to address the council, and once your time is up, I'm going to ask that you leave the podium, and that you will be officially done, but you have three minutes to correct.
My name is Fred Bunker, 242. 242 Lawrence Mariner. I, I'm here again about this appraisal that was ordered, and that's why I get happy, is I'm not sure if Ms. Banks, may, may available to give any information?
Give Ms. Banks if you want to, we can give them.
I'm the chair of Ms. Banks, where there was information given to council regarding the minutes that the appraisal was submitted by the legal department. Did you get my email? You thanked me for my email. If you don't have the information in front of you, it's here. I can't give it to you. I would have done that, I sent the email to the city clerk in a reminder today that the information would be in the minutes of a meeting where Susan Ward requested funding to create an appraisal. This is the copy of the appraisal she created, Ms. Seymour and Mr. Snyder represented, if we get a legal act on it, if we don't understand, we should call the phone number. I called this phone number, they said they have a confidentiality agreement, and the only one who can talk to me about this is the person who was prepared for, or the people who, hearing the request from the legal department for an appraisal, and the reason, would agree to fund it. I've been told this costs thousands and thousands of dollars to create an appraisal, and now I'm being told I cost the city thousands of dollars. I never had anything to do with this. McVanda, after a house damage created by the fire department, a flood in my home, they left the water running for three days, I was forced to spend $70,000. I got a letter claiming my house would be torn down if I didn't get a permit. McVanda said, leave it vacant and abandoned, it'll be eligible for the land and property buyback program that was being funded, as I recall, through Michigan funding to buy vacant abandoned homes. I never intended with Seymour like you to live in Southfield, I found it so comforting until a school was built. And so, I'd like to show you now the active driveway that the school just opened up, and how in this picture of my property, it shows this driveway that makes any comfortable, quiet concept of enjoying residential property impossible. And unless this appraisal was prepared in good faith, I don't have a record without the clerk's.
Okay, Mr. Buckley, Mr. Buckley, your time is up, but if you could give that information to Ms. Banks, and that's basically all that we can say at this time, do you have anything else you'd like to, I'm going to give you just a few more seconds.
Well, no, I had a presentation so I could get to the horse's mouth, so to speak, of why you approved funds to create this appraisal. This council would have had to vote.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't you give the information to Ms. Banks?
She said the information that I gave.
Again, give the information that you have to her, it will be.
And I can't read this.
She'll make copy and give it to us.
Would you find the minutes remaining at which this request was made to create that act on it by the honor of her best employer, the man who decided?
Okay, we'll take care of it for you. Thank you so much.
I hope to make a more productive presentation to show you that this was made for the city at Southfield by the planning department. For what reason, I'm not sure, that's why I'm trying to find out why this appraisal was funded by the city, and now I'm being accused of costing the city thousands of dollars. I don't want to own this city, I never asked for this appraisal being created.
Okay.
So, you have to talk to the city attorney about why she ordered this.
Okay, all right.
So, the city clerk has the minutes that would explain that, but I sent her an email hoping to have that information in front of you.
All right.
Will you get my email?
Okay, Mr. Buckley, we'll be getting your results, hopefully we do. Thank you so much. The next person to address the council is Michael Littman. And it doesn't look like he's here, the next person is Ms. Geraldine Mott, you have three minutes to address.
My name is Geraldine Mott, I started to leave this evening, but I stayed on. I will not return here unless I'm issued an apology to the way I've been treated ever since I first arrived here, because I say things that are not welcome to be said. I had once mentioned that to this black guy with the Scottish name, the president of the school board, that the rudeness with which I've been received has no excuse from such a body. But we are under a corporate situation where you are essentially accountable to the corporate state, not to the people, and the reference to using the police officers here on duty to evict the public for saying things, or for telling anybody off, is indicative of where the police powers are. If we had lawful police powers, no police officer could be ordered by a city councillor like a police dog to be handled and given orders as to what to do. Police officers would be free agents, to decide if a crime is being committed and they would act, otherwise they would not take orders, unlawful orders, to abuse other folks because someone with authoritarian attitude wishes to do so. What our wealth of this nation has been taken under control, and we are just sold out enough to exist right now, some of us more comfortably than others, but increasingly more people are being displaced and disowned. And unless we realize that this nation is in serious trouble and on the brink of economic disaster, as well as the threat of totalitarian disaster, and there's not enough people willing to use their own minds as free agents and their own bodies to resist what's going on, we're going to inherit a catastrophe here in this nation. The contrast to the circus at the beginning of this meeting regarding a young woman getting recognition by the establishment entertainment field is indicative of where we are as a people. Our young people do need to be encouraged, but not in that direction. They get more attention for something like that than if they did something meaningful to change the direction of this nation and where it's headed. I ask those to genuinely have a spiritual frame of reverence, to get counsel from the Holy Spirit of the sovereign God Almighty.
And you have to.
Ask for your personal marching orders and move on out. We cannot wait for the corrupt to cling up their act, we need to act before it's too late. For great God's sake.
Thank you. The next person to speak for three minutes is Mr. Jerome Mott.
Madam President, my name is.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Monk. My address is post office box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, forty zero three seven dash zero one five five. Tonight, I'd like to revisit ZR thirteen twenty-one. If you recall, last March seventeen, in these parry chambers, the ZR thirteen twenty-one was placed on hold because the residents of Evergreen Meadows condos complained that counsel's legal notice was confusing. Nothing new here. Welcome to the club. One of the reasons why this notice is confusing is that it contains two and a half inches of needless hierarchies. That is a useless esoteric legal description of this property, which I believe that no one on this council will be able to translate. If you, the elected officials, can't understand your own legal mungumbo, how do you expect the residents to understand your mungumbo? Taro said in eighteen fifty-four, simplify, simplify. And in two thousand and six, the state of Michigan took Taro's advice by passing Public Act one ten. Today, all that is necessary to identify ZR thirteen twenty-one's property and a legal notice is a street address. Yes, just a simple street address. And I vote. The notice shall include a listing of all existing street addresses within the property. I'm going. It's that simple. Yet, even with this simple fourteen-worded mandate, you folks managed to screw it up repeatedly, one way or another. For example, I'm all right with that. Your legal notice obviously listed only three street addresses when the assessors' records listed twenty-five street addresses. In the ensuing eight months, this council made fifteen additional legal errors regarding San Pete's property. This council is truly legally challenged. Their shortcomings are reflected humbly throughout the city's code, and they have not gone unnoticed. In one chapter alone, you folks have on average four point six errors of records per page. Check it out, check it out. After all, this is your code, not mine. You folks wrote it, not I, the mere residents. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Next person. Is your timer ready? It's three minutes.
My name is Pamela Gerro, P O box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, forty zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. As your independent voice, I am just a phone call away or a click away via email. On March third of this year, this honorable body of C O W voted to change counsel's procedural rule number five to limit our free speech from five minutes to three minutes. I would like to thank councilmen Snyder, Fraser, and Councilman Moss for sticking up for the people and fighting to retain that five minutes of free speech. The new gang of four, Sylvia Jordan, Donna Fercassi, Sidney Lance, and Joan Seymour, did this in an effort to suppress our vote, our voice. Remember, people, our voice, our input, and our vote is what matters. My initial reaction was negative, but upon reflection, I thought this was a brilliant idea and it makes sense. It's sort of like Goldilocks and the three bears. Five minutes is too long, one minute is too short, and three minutes is just right. It's hard for any one person to hold an audience for five minutes outside of someone like Orson Welles reading the phone book. I am honored and humbled that this council has taken several of my suggestions lately. Thank you very much for that. So here's another suggestion. Let's move the top, let's move communications to the top of the agenda because every public relations expert will tell you that it's good to get the bad de, bad information out early and then move on. Unfortunately, general voters have not learned that lesson as we've seen in recent news accounts. I hope this council will. My name is Pamela Gerro, and I approve this message. And again, I'd like to ask you guys, if you could ask Lawrence Tech people to park at the parking lot, because at the time they parked in the cul-de-sac, people were still coming up to drop off their taxes in the drop box. So it would be a good idea since they're not going to stay to park and utilize that beautiful parking lot that has the cameras that the police department can see and all the cars can be seen. And Mr. Zorn, I'd like to remind you what Mr. Bunker is talking about. If you remember, he allowed me and asked me to be at the meeting with you and Sue Ward. So I want you to be, um, very, um, kind and give him this information. I know in that meeting you said to thank him, they would act so best. Okay? Do the right thing.
Okay, we'll move to the counsel portion, why?
Madam Chair. I move the expense report of Byron Fraser, uh, who's, uh, at the conference in Washington, D.C.
Support.
There's a motion by, uh, Mr., supported by Mr. Moss, to approve the expense report of Mr. Fraser going to the NLC. Any questions on favor? I oppose.
Madam Chair, I move the expense report of Byron Fraser for the conference in Lansing, Michigan.
Support.
There's a motion by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Moss, to approve the expense report of Mr. Fraser going to the Michigan municipal league. Any questions on favor? I oppose.
And Chair, I move the expense report of Jeremy Moss, uh, going to the Capitol Conference in Washington, D.C.
Over to what? Support, support.
There's a motion by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the expense report of Mr. Moss going to the NLC Capitol Conference in Washington, D.C. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move the expense report of Jeremy Moss, Michigan Municipal League Conference in Lansing, Michigan.
There's a motion by Councilman Fercassi, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the expense report of Mr. Moss to the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Madam Chair.
Motion carries.
I move the expense report of Ken Snyder for the expenses incurred at the Capitol Conference in Washington, D.C.
Support.
There's a motion by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Moss, to approve the expense report of Mr. Snyder, the NLC Capitol Conference. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Chair, I have just one item under the temporary slides, one that, uh, presented already, and that is I'd like to have the legislative committee set up a meeting with, uh, county and state, um, and the legislators, and I'd like to have them discuss, uh, the, the roads that they control and the manner in which they maintain. That'd be the topic of.
Okay.
Maybe invite this meeting or something where we can.
Mr. Moss, your chair, thank.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea, and we will work to schedule that.
There's any opposition to that?
There's a school council, right?
Right, school.
There's a school council.
Yeah.
Works for me.
All right, Mr. Snyder.
Uh, I would just like to note that today is, um, two minutes left of the fifty-sixth, uh, birthday of the city of Southfield, uh, uh, April twenty-eighth nineteen fifty-eight, which became a day. And, uh.
It's got a birthday to us.
Yeah.
And Lieutenant Fercassi, um, I hope he can help a neighbor or serve his community.
All right. We'll get together and we'll sit one up soon as possible. Come back and be doing any day.
I mean, small.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam President. I have an item that I want to talk about, uh, as we have just approved our reports from the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference, which Councilman Byron Fraser and I attended. Uh, the Michigan Municipal League, for those of you who aren't aware, is an organization of city council members and mayors from across the state that advocates for us on state policies in Lansing. And one of the speakers at the conference, uh, a month ago was Lieutenant Governor Brian Kelly, who spoke about the personal property tax repeal. And since this is going to be on our August ballot, I thought it was, uh, important to share some information with Southfield residents. Uh, when Governor Snyder took office in two thousand and eleven, one of the first things he asked Lieutenant Governor Kelly to do was repeal the personal property tax. Um, now, based on his name, it sounds like a, a good thing, but it really isn't. Uh, it's not your personal property, it's not my personal property tax that's being repealed. It's the, the tax that businesses pay on heavy equipment and machinery in their offices. Uh, so the name personal property tax is a business leading. Um, this tax is administered by cities. It's collected by cities. Um, and it's actually the tax that city council can choose to abate during tax abatements. So the state has no role or authority with this tax, and it's actually helped us to bring jobs and businesses to the city of Southfield. Um, so I think it's kind of ridiculous that the state repeal that when nobody even really asked for it to be repealed. Now, the repeal, um, doesn't make a huge dent in, um, in certain communities that are mostly veteran communities. Um, but in Southfield, two-thirds of our tax base is business, uh, so either commercial or industrial. So our late city administrator, Jim Schure, had calculated that this would be a nine million dollar annual hit to our budget. We would lose nine million dollars every single year. Um, and I know Mr. Fercassi has talked about this and pointed this out, that the residents who pay taxes in this city, they expect fire and police to show up when an emergency happens, and they expect for the roads to be plowed. Uh, but here, the governor's administration was putting a nine million dollar hole in our city budget and giving a tax break to businesses, but they would still expect the same fire and police services and snow plowing as the hardworking, tax-paying residents of our city. So it really wa, it wasn't right. So last year, uh, Jim Schure, uh, Mayor Lawrence, and myself, as chairman of the council's legislative committee, we went to Lansing, uh, to meet with Lieutenant Governor Kelly, uh, and really explain the impact on local communities about this repeal. Uh, in a, I, I own this, a total disconnect between this legislation, the policies of this governor's office, and the impact that it has on our local community. So based from that meeting and, and some of the work of the Michigan Municipal League, there was a compromise that on the August twenty fourteen ballot, we will be voting to replace that lost funding to local cities, including the city of Southfield. Uh, I want to be clear on what we're voting on. It's not a tax increase. Instead, it is paid for by eliminating special corporate tax loopholes and by establishing a police and fire tax that is only paid for by the businesses that receive the personal property tax reduction. So what does this mean? It means we need to vote yes on this ballot initiative on August fifth to keep the same services that we enjoy here in the city of Southfield. And the Michigan Municipal League has launched their campaign this month. You can go to strongandsafecommunities.com for more information on this ballot initiative. They will be sending me a resolution that we can pass to support this ballot initiative to get the funding back, uh, and I'll be introducing that soon. Um, but, you know, we're, being direct here, and this city council has kind of been, uh, very proactive about this and very upset about the disconnect between Lansing leaders, um, and the needs of local communities. So supporting this ballot initiative is a way that we can fight the reckless touch of the local community. Um, so I wanted to make sure that we're aware of this, um, that we're on the ball, uh, and that we get our residents i- in support of, uh, of getting the funding from Lansing back that we lost.
All right, thank you, Mr. Monk. Anyone else? We'll move to the mayor's portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple things, um, tomorrow, I'm sorry, ma'am. Lovely. Thank you. May sixth at seven o'clock, uh, I will be starting my mayor's roundtable. Uh, you know, as the governor mayor has shared, the community roundtables, where I invite the community to come out and talk about issues that are happening in the city. You're able to get updated by the administration, but also ask questions. So the first one will be on economic development, and, uh, you'll have an opportunity to get, to see, uh, some of the amazing things that you hear us talk about here at the council meetings and be updated, and ask questions about what's going on in your city. So it'll be in the Marquee Room, uh, in City Hall on the lower levels. I do encourage you all to come out. Also, I had a wonderful day on Saturday. Um, we partnered, I partnered with the Southfield Public Schools on a litter-free begins with me, starts with me, let's keep Southfield clean initiative. And one of the things that I know I learned, uh, growing up, is that you don't litter, you don't throw trash in your neighborhood. And that's one of the things I wanted to partner with the schools to really emphasize that message. And the schools, um, partnered with me, and they came up with a unique idea that each school would get a team together and they'd get extra credit. They clean up their own school. So they went out after the, the melt of the snow, you know, there's trash and there's the, the landscaping was made, uh, it did, it needs some tending. And so I went to Bussey, I went to, um, uh, Bernie and also Southfield Layroom, and it was amazing seeing the young people, the parents and the staff cleaning up their buildings and taking pride in that. And I would talk to the kids, and they would pick them up, picking the trash up, but the parents were, a lot of the parents were there with their children, being role models of what it means to clean up, um, where you live, and in that case is where you go to school. So, and I shared with the administration, I really thank the schools because they are a major owner of real estate in our community, and their properties are, we acknowledge them when we do our verification award. And it was good because we all know that a lot of us who have neighborhoods, um, um, parking stores or gas stations, we can see the little trickle of trash all the way from the stores back into the neighborhood. And so I, I was very happy about that, and that, that's the growing, um, sense of community that we want to be having here. And when, um, they are actually doing a video in each of the schools, and they'll be judging between the police chief, code enforcement, and others. And, uh, they'll get, uh, the chiefs will come out and have a people party with them and talk jokes a little to the winner of the, uh, video. But we all know that if we instill that into them as we grow up and adults, they'll say that's not acceptable in our yard. So I was really proud of that. And the, and the other thing, I just wanted to talk again, I know there was a, a mention about, uh, acknowledging young people who do positive things. I could tell you, uh, the two young people that we talked about tonight are amazing young women who are talented, gifted, and we have, um, I know for a fact, many of the council members I see there, we attend the schools, or the, the, I attend always the Honor Society induction in the high schools, because I know how important it is to show the young people that we are proud of them in what they do. And I encourage everyone, there's Honor Society, uh, there are, there are competitions, the robot competitions, there are all these different things, uh, that are happening in our schools. Show up and show these children that you care and that you're proud of them. And, um, the science exhibits in your local schools, and you can always find out what's going on in schools. But I'm proud of the accomplishments of our children. And if we don't stand up and give them that support by just being there, uh, sometimes they'll face life matters, you never know what child you make a difference in their life just by being there. So I, again, I'm proud of, uh, all the children in the city of Southfield. I tell them whenever I meet with them that, um, I brag that we have the greatest children in the country here in the city of Southfield. And I said, I don't tell lies. You have to be the best student in, um, in the world, and they, they always agree to do it. I also wanted to thank, um, Councilman Moss, he helped host a group of students. What school was it?
It was, they were fourth graders from Vandenberg.
From Vandenberg. And they spent the day here at City Hall, and, and they were dispossessed by the fire, uh, the police chief, and, and they came into City Hall, and they really, uh, enjoyed it and, um, giving them, and they have. a, to have a day at City Hall. We get those requests. So, I think Councilman Moss spent the day with them, and he said, "Look, I'm the closest to your age." And they're looking at him saying, "You're old."
In the first, you know, in this room.
Thank you, Madam President.
I do want to commend you, Mayor, for the campaign that you had, establishing the public schools in terms of keeping the streets clean and clean Southfield, Vandenberg, clean everything. Let's move over to the attorney portion. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that I have before Council this evening is a request to initiate a moratorium on exterior lighting, which is used to accent buildings or architectural features of buildings. This would include neon lighting, the so-called LED rope lighting, any type of fluorescent or gaseous tube lighting. Planting Department has had some initial inquiries about the installation of this type of lighting on various parts of buildings, and would like the opportunity to study it, go to the planting commission, come back to Council with some standards, and we're asking for a 180-day moratorium while that process takes place, so that we're able to properly study it, accomplish some standards.
Entertainer motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Fraser?
I move that we approve a 180-day moratorium on exterior lighting to accent buildings or architectural features to give the staff an opportunity to study the pros and cons of such lighting.
Support. By Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Snyder, to approve the proposed moratorium. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda comes from our council.
Thank you. Before I present the council meeting start time, I would just like to share with council that this past Saturday, we all saw, I believe, made a difference in the city of Southfield with Exhure Day.
That's amazing.
It was an unbelievable day. We were busy from start to finish. We serviced almost 1,000 cars. Out of the 1,000 cars, almost 90% were Southfield residents, and it was interesting in that this was the first year that everyone was excited because waste management, I believe, had their recycling, we had our shredding, there was the city cleanup day, and the residents were actually going from a bus to a bus to a bus. And we heard more people say, "Thank you. We hope the city continues to do the same every single year." So, it was a very positive, good day in the city of Southfield. Our next item before council is a change in our council meeting time for our May 5 meeting. It is being proposed that we change the time from 7:00 in the evening to start our meeting at 1:00 in the afternoon. And again, this is for the May 5 committee, the whole meeting.
We have a motion, also?
I support it.
We have a motion by Councilman Moss, supported by Councilman Moss, to approve the council meeting start time change from 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. President, Mr. Moss?
Good evening, Madam President, and the mayor and elected officials. I'd like to bring before you this evening a proposal, which I'm requesting that the authorization to have it clerked to the mayor to sign. Not annually, I bring before the city council our depositary resolution, which lists all the banks that we are allowed to do business with. And we maintain as far as a good relationship with all our local banks. We try to have CDs as well as other banking services with various banks in the area. And our primary bank up until this point has been Comerica. Unfortunately, over the past few years, we've been seeing an increase in the banking rates that they've been charging, as well as also a decrease in the services that we've been providing. And so, we have put, and in monitoring the situation, we've looked at other RFPs, request proposals, being done by other entities that are similar or larger to us. And there was one that was just recently done by Oakland County. Oakland County had requested for treasury management services for banking services, and they received the proposals back from various banks, and the most favorable one was Huntington Bank, which offered a very aggressive pricing proposal. So, as a larger entity, and as well as also a local entity, we have the opportunity to be able to piggyback on that as long as they are willing to abide by the same exact bid that they have given to Oakland County. And Huntington Bank has agreed to maintain the pricing that they offered to Oakland County to us as well. That will result in the savings of approximately $27,000 annually. So, it's substantial savings, as well as also increasing the services that we'll be able to provide for our employees. Up until now, our employees, they went to cash their checks at a local branch from Comerica, we have a fee, they didn't have accounts over there. Huntington Bank will offer all the employees a chance to be able to cash their checks with the proper city ID at no fee for them. So, that's an extra service, as well as also try to provide additional incentives for employees to maintain accounts and be able to have the right deposit, as well as also cutting down on fees that the city maintains. We have Representative Farnum Huntington, a veteran of Huntington Bank, who'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, President, council members, and elected officials. I've had the opportunity to know her for a few years now, and we've developed a good working relationship. A year ago, this Oakland County treasurer awarded a significant portion of their treasury management services to Huntington. That's gone quite well, and I think who closely observed that and approached us last summer, and we began a discussion where we are willing to offer all the services at exactly the same pricing of the county, which is pretty attractive. We did have to take a close look, but certainly Southfield is a very special community to do business with. We have three offices in the community, and we'd love to grow the relationship.
Madam President?
Councilman Fercati?
I'd like to move the result, recommendation, the resolution, I'm showing that the city council is hereby authorized, the mayor, city clerk to sign the agreement for treasury management services with Huntington Bank.
The board.
We have a motion by Councilman Fercati, supported by Councilman Fraser, to approve the management services agreement with Huntington Bank.
Hey, hey.
Mr. Snyder?
I'm a special here on Huntington Bank customer, numerous you opened the branch across the street that has now been built, 12 miles, that's for a bank. I noted in your portfolio, the amount of community service, and volunteerism in the bank. I would like, and I appreciate your willingness to cooperate and work with us and saving, but I would like to encourage you to do some of that volunteerism in the city of Southfield. I'll tell you honestly, I approached the bank numerous times about supporting things like Volunteer Day or some of our other community projects, and I was reluctant. And since we had your ears tonight, I'm just asking politely for you to consider some of our Southfield projects. It's an impressive bit of organization and causes that you've supported and delivered here at Southfield.
Thank you, Councilman. I will personally approach our regional president, Mike Tzuyi, and some of the folks that organize our events, and try to have them look at some opportunities that I'll certainly discover with our curves help or perhaps councils. Certainly, we want to be more active. I will say, resources are unlimited, and it's not my call, but I promise I will make an effort to move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, I do want to say, the Lemonade Day, I think is something that would be phenomenal. Every year, I think that we should do that in Southfield to teach the children about entrepreneurship, and it'd be a great partnership with our, many of our organizations, but I would love to see you do that.
Well, Lemonade Day is one of our primary sponsored events, and so certainly some of that focus could move toward the Southfield community.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries. And Mr. Warren, I commend you again for keeping eyes open on Southfield and keeping your eyes on the bottom line, because it's $27,000 a year, but it's more money than we can save. So, thank you for doing a great job.
My pleasure. And continuing with the theme of saving money, this is something that directly affects our residents. I have another item, which I'd like to request the approval from the city council or the mayor clerk to sign the agreement with official payments to allow for our residents. Many years ago, we, the city council approved the authorization for working with Oakland County for online tax payments. We had, through their website, paylocaletaxes.com, they passed along the price of 2.75% of the tax payment that would be charged to the residents if they would pay with a credit card. And they also allowed the option of paying with an electronic check, and that was $2.50 fee. In researching the costs and being able to try to constantly save money for our residents and for the city, we were able to find that official payments had a bid that going out to the Department of Treasury, to the United States Government, to the IRS. And with that, they offered a rate of 2.35%. And so, I approached the company, and they wanted to visit the city of Southfield, and said, "Look, if you could give us that rate that you're offering to U.S. government, then we consider," as long as it saves our residents, then we consider, and also it's going to improve our efficiency. It's going to streamline that residents will be able to see all the information seamlessly on the website. Instead of having to have a copy of a tax bill prior to going online and making a payment, now they'll be able to pull up a copy of it directly when they're paying the bill. And so, it makes it easier also for our staff to be able to record the payments. It'll flow directly into our tax system. So, it's a much better system. And so, everybody requesting that we can approve for official payments to become the online tax service.
Madam President? I don't know what the resolution was standing, but I wonder if you could clarify that in the resolution.
We actually, we have an agreement. I closed. There was an agreement that was given to our...
We have a motion.
Mayor resolved that the city of Southfield, the city council has hereby authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement for collection services of official payments. Make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Fraser, supported by Councilman Snyder, to approve the agreement for the official payment services. Any questions?
I do have one question. Who is this company?
It's actually the largest, if you look around the country, they are throughout, nationwide, they are the number one company in terms of online tax payments working with municipalities. They've dominated the industry. And the reason why originally, when they approached Southfield, when online tax payment was becoming popular, their rate was 3%, and they also were an average state company in the, then they didn't have as much of a local presence at the time. And now, they have a representative that's focused on the, on our market over here, as well as also lowering the rate to 2.35, which is much more aggressive than the 2.75 they were currently charging our residents.
You've answered everything except for the question I asked.
The company, it's a publicly traded company. It's, and it's a national company. It's called Official Payments is the name of the company.
Okay. How they located here?
They have a local representative, but they, I have to check to look and see where they're outstanding. They're in Virginia is where they're at.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Fercati. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries. All right, the next item on our agenda is the bond refinancing. We just lifted this at our 5:30 meeting, and we defer this to Mr. Tzuyi.
Madam President, as we discussed at our 5:30 meeting, we're asking council to adopt resolutions authorizing issuance of the Michigan Transportation Fund Street Improvements and refunding bond series 2014. As discussed earlier, the bonds were originally issued in 2005. We're proposing that we go to the cap of $10 million. This will allow the city to take advantage of lower interest rates for an annual savings of roughly $45,000 per year for the remaining debt of 5.7 million, and allow us to take out another 4.2 billion to be borrowed for making progress for the structure city.
The board? We have a motion by Mr. Snyder, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of the Michigan Transportation Fund Street Improvement and Refunding Bond. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries. Then we're going to enact two ordinance.
Madam President?
Mr. Fraser?
I move that we enact ordinance number 1623.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Snyder, to enact ordinance 1623. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed.
Madam President?
Mr. Fraser?
I move that we enact ordinance number 1624.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Snyder, to enact ordinance 1624. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any other acts to be brought to the council table this evening? Seeing this nod, there are no more.
I heard a vote. I heard a vote. And, 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 and.